Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council Executive Budget Hearing on the Committee on Finance, joined with the Committee on Higher Education and Civil and Human Rights. At this time, we ask that you silence cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning and welcome to the second day of FY24 Executive Budget Hearings. Today, we will be, we're beginning with the City Commission on Human Rights. I'm Councilmember Justin Brannon, and I chair the Committee on Finance. Pleased to be joined by my good friend and colleague, Councilmember Natasha Williams, Chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Human Rights. We've been joined today, Councilmembers Marte, Abreu, Richardson, Jordan, and Lewis. I'm happy to welcome CCHR Commissioner and familiar face, Annabelle Palma, and her team. Thank you all for joining us today to answer our questions. On April 22nd, 2023, the administration released the executive financial plan for FY23 to 27 with a proposed FY24 budget of $106.7 billion. CCHR's projected FY24 budget of $14.1 million represents less than 1% of the administration's proposed FY24 budget in the executive plan. This represents an increase of 1.2 million or 9.5% from the $12.8 million budgeted in the administration's FY24 preliminary plan. The increase comes from both increased funding and headcount at the CCHR's Source of Income Unit. CCHR's projections also show a decrease in headcount of three positions since the adoption of the FY23 budget. My questions today will largely focus on the asylum seeker crisis, the bias response team, the salary transparency enforcement efforts, and the commission's efforts on enforcing the human rights law as a whole. I want to turn now to my co-chair for this hearing, Councilmember Natasha Williams, for her opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the fiscal 2024 Executive Budget Hearing for the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. My name is Natasha Williams, and I am the Chair of the Committee, obviously. Today, we will review the fiscal 2024 budgets for the Commission on Human Rights and the Equal Employment Practices Commission to understand how each addresses the protections for New Yorkers through the city human rights law and in city employment practices. The Commission on Human Rights enforces human rights law and educates the public to encourage positive community relations. The Commission's fiscal 2024 executive budget totals $14 million, including $11.6 million for personnel services to support 139 positions and $2.5 million for other-than-personal services. The New York City Equal Employment Practices Commission is an independent, non-mayoral oversight entity tasked with auditing, reviewing, and monitoring the equal employment practices of the City of New York. Its fiscal 2024 executive budget totals $1.27 million, including $1.18 million for personnel services and $87,000 for other-than-personal services. I would like to welcome the leadership of both Commissions. The City, CCHR, EEPC, and the Committee are all in a unique position to proactively support New Yorkers as we continue to move forward. I would like to continue to have these fruitful conversations with ongoing oversight hearings. However, we have a lot of work ahead. Today, I am interested in learning about CCHR's Source of Income Unit, its staffing, and the inner workings of the Law Enforcement Bureau. For EEPC, I look forward to discussing the commission's staffing and the various reports the agency releases. This plan included one need, one new needs for CCHR, but decreased both entity budgets by $1.2 million for CCHR and $73,000 for EEPC. We're really talking about drop in the bucket, for real, with these various pegs in both. I remain concerned that these budgets are not sufficiently funded and would like to further discuss that in today's hearing. While all government agencies perform good work, EEPC and CCHR are particularly critical in ensuring that our workplace has equal employment opportunities, diversity, inclusion, and most importantly, that in this city, our civil and human rights are being upheld. I'm working on a package of bills around equity and proper funding and staffing for these agencies, and this is critical to the work that we do to ensure that it's effective. The Committee would also like to discuss this and other budgetary changes in the Adams Administration's budget. I look forward to learning more about the Commission on Human Rights and the Equal Employment Practices Commission, the important role that each has in New York. I also want to thank our committee staff for their hard work, financial analyst Tim Veer, unit head Jack Story, senior counsel Jay Suri, and our legislative policy analyst Weem, and my budget and legislative coordinator, Nader. I'd like to welcome and thank again the Commission on Human Rights for the work that they do, and I'm looking forward to hearing from you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Before we get started, also, my thanks to Tan Veer and the, from the Council Finance Division for preparing all the hearings today, my committee counsel, Mike Toomey, and my senior advisor, John Yett, and all the financial analysts and support staff behind the scenes who make these executive budget hearings work. I'm now going to turn it over to my committee counsel, Mike Toomey, to swear in the witnesses for their testimony today. We've also been joined by Francisco Moya on Zoom.
Good morning. If you raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and you will honestly and faithfully answer your council member questions? Commissioner Palma? Deputy Commissioner Raj? Deputy Commissioner Chaudery? Deputy Commissioner Salazar? Thank you, may I begin?
Adam, I think your mic's not on.
Sorry, I forgot that part. Good morning, Chair Williams, Chair Brannon, and members of the Committee on Finance and Civil and Human Rights. Thank you for convening today's hearing. I'm Annabelle Palma, Commissioner and Chair of the New York City Commission on Human Rights. Today, I'm joined by Sabna Raj, Deputy Commissioner of Law Enforcement Bureau, Kadi Chaudry, Deputy Commissioner of the Community Relations Bureau, and Mariela Salazar, Deputy Commissioner for Administrative Services. I've had the honor to lead this agency since October of 2021. I'm proud of what our team has accomplished, and I will speak about some highlights of our work today. I will focus on enforcement, education, outreach, and legislative changes. The Commission is the agency charged with implementing the New York City Human Rights Law. Our law is one of the broadest and most protective anti-discrimination and anti-harassment laws in the country, with 27 protected categories. The law prohibits discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. By statute, the Commission has a dual mandate. First, the Commission's Law Enforcement Bureau enforces the law. This includes investigating complaints of discrimination from the public, initiating commission investigations on behalf of the city, and conducting tests to identify potential violations of the law. Second, the Community Relations Bureau offers workshops and trainings on New Yorkers' rights and responsibilities under the law. We engage with businesses, employers, and housing providers across all five boroughs. The Community Relations Bureau seeks to prevent discrimination through education and works closely with community partners and sibling agencies to mitigate bias and discrimination. Our law has been amended twice over the past year. The most recent amendment, the definition of domestic violence, to include economic abuse. This amendment will go into effect in July. In November of 2022, new transparency provisions that require employers to display the pay in job advertisements went into effect. These two changes build up the dozen amendments to our law that the Council enacted since 2012 through 2021. The law aims to advance equity in employment, in housing, and in public accommodations. In the workplace, the law includes protections for pregnant and lactating New Yorkers, prohibitions on discrimination based on applicant or current employee's arrest or conviction history, as well as protections for individuals with disabilities. The law forbids discrimination in housing based on race, disability, age, sexual orientation, source of income, and other protected categories. The law also prohibits retaliation against individuals who confront discrimination, report discrimination, or participate in a related investigation. The work we do every day aims to prevent discrimination and bias. We know that it still occurs, and when discrimination does occur, our agency aims to remedy the harms. In FY22, the Commission resolved 667 cases and assessed nearly $7 million in damages and penalties for violations of the law. Additionally, the Commission has shaped remedies that repair the harm experienced by individuals and communities impacted by discrimination. For example, in instances of employment discrimination, the Commission has negotiated resolutions that require respondents to change policies and practices that broaden employment opportunities, including for individuals who face discrimination because they are sexually harassed, live with a disability, or have been justice-involved. In housing cases, settlements have included set-aside apartments for voucher holders, as well as construction of ramps and modifications to apartments so residents with disabilities can access housing. Overall, the Commission seeks to foster compliance with the law. The Commission continues to use our enforcement tools to educate covered employers, housing providers, and providers of public accommodations about their legal obligations. We work with cover entities to develop policies and practices that prevent discrimination. We expanded our trainings, increased outreach to sibling agencies, and have grown our multilingual training. These efforts are supplemented by our extensive offerings on protections in the law, and the trainings and workshops focus on the specific groups of New Yorkers. Trainings are one of the example of the wide-ranging outreach carried out by our community liaisons and lead advisers who work specifically with the LGBTQIA individuals, New Yorkers of the African diaspora, Asian New Yorkers, and transgender individuals, among other New Yorkers historically underserved and underrepresented. The attorneys in the Law Enforcement Bureau evaluate and investigate allegations of discrimination brought to the Commission by members of the public. LEB also utilizes the agency's investigatory and prosecutorial powers to root out discrimination through commission-initiated investigations. LEB offers the option of resolving claims in lieu of filing a complaint, leading to a quicker resolution in certain matters. At the same time, LEB continues to prioritize timely case resolutions. In FY22, the Commission fielded over 11,000 inquiries from members of the public in the form of phone calls, emails, letters, visits to commission offices, or at commission events. More than 780 of these inquiries were in languages other than English. Spanish, Mandarin, and Russian are the most common in this category. In the first half of FY23, LEB received over 5,000 inquiries. These numbers reflect the Commission's focus on enhancing agency visibility and amplifying knowledge of the broad protections afforded by our law. We continue to use all of our tools to inform New Yorkers that they have a right to live free from discrimination and harassment. In FY22, the largest number of inquiries we received were in employment, accounting for over 2,000 inquiries. Housing is second with over 750 inquiries. Across all jurisdictions, housing, employment, and public accommodations, disability-related inquiries were the most reported, followed by inquiries related to gender, and then race and color. We received over 600 inquiries related to disability and over 550 inquiries related to gender. Race and color were raised in nearly 400 inquiries. The Commission continues to prioritize the use of pre-complaint interventions, which can provide more timely relief from harm in FY22. LEB resolved nearly 200 matters without filing a complaint. The most common pre-complaint interventions involve disability accommodations in housing, totaling 65 interventions, and 41 interventions involving lawful source-of-income discrimination, where a tenant or a prospective tenant was denied an apartment or the renewal of a lease based on the use of a voucher. The Commission's authority to initiate its own investigations without a member of the public filing a complaint remains a significant tool in our enforcement. When the Commission identifies the potential that widespread violations or discriminatory practices are taking place, the Commission can initiate an investigation. In FY22, CCHR launched 38 commission-initiated actions and filed 11 commission-initiated complaints. The Commission also uses testing to determine whether there is discrimination in housing and housing employment or public accommodations. Agency staff may conduct testing in person or on the telephone or online as part of an investigation to see if they're treated differently or are given different information because they belong to a protected class. In FY22, the Commission tested over 700 entities. An entity may be tested for violations in multiple jurisdictions and/or multiple protected classes. The Law Enforcement Bureau filed over 300 public-initiated complaints of discrimination in FY22. A little over 70% of those cases were in employment, 20% were in housing, and 6% were in public accommodations. Similar to inquiries, disability-related claims are the most prevalent, followed by gender and race. When violations of the law are identified and a complaint is filed, LEB works to fashion remedies and relief that address the harms caused to New Yorkers. In FY22, the Commission recovered $7 million in damages and civil penalties. Of that, over $6 million were awarded in compensatory damages to complainants and over $8 million in civil penalties to the General Fund of the City of New York. I'm sorry, over 800,000 in civil penalties to the General Fund of the City of New York. The Law Enforcement Bureau also seeks resolutions that deter future harm and effectively change the dynamics that allow harm to occur. Settlements are key to innovative resolutions that lead to change. In FY22, 31% of the cases were resolved through settlements. Ongoing work to end source-of-income discrimination against New Yorkers illustrates novel remedies in housing, such as the use of set-aside and broker-incentive programs. The notable source-of-income conciliation from FY22 resulted in an agreement in which the housing provider set aside 20 units for voucher holders from across their properties. Since 2020, when the agency first began securing set-asides, the Law Enforcement Bureau has secured approximately 150 units for voucher holders. Recent settlements also include broker-incentive programs where brokers offer monetary bonuses to placing voucher holders. This policy benefits brokers who work with and place the highest number of tenants who receive financial assistance to pay their rent. The Commission's Office of Mediation and Conflict Resolution offered parties a voluntary mediation program at no cost. It is confidential and available at any stage of a case. Staffed by a mediation director, the independent unit mediated 45 cases to resolution in FY22. Mediator cases accounted for damages totaling over $2 million, as well as non-economic relief. The Commission's Community Relations Bureau cultivates understanding and respect among cities diverse communities, builds partnerships, and informs New Yorkers about the protections under the law. In FY22, we reached a record number of New Yorkers through conferences, workshops, and training sessions. CRB forges relationships that are essential to the work that we do to ensure recognition, dignity, and respect for all New Yorkers. CRB works diligently to foster inclusion and understanding. The agency's five community service centers, our lead advisers, and community liaisons are at the center of these efforts. In FY22, the Commission launched Understanding Jewish Experiences and Anti-Semitism, which brings a human rights lens to addressing the anti-Semitism and its harmful impacts on our society. In FY22, education and outreach efforts emphasize new amendments to our law. Sustained outreach focused on the expansion of workplace anti-discrimination protection to domestic workers, regardless of employer size. The agency worked to raise awareness about the law among employers and employees through in-person outreach, such as days of visibility in each of the five boroughs and business corridors outreach. CCHR also engaged with small business owners in all five boroughs. Staff provided accessible tools and guidance on how to comply with new pay transparency protections, as well as the longstanding employment protections in our law.
Commissioner, sorry, they told me that we have a limited time. Is it okay if you just skip to your conclusion?
Sure.
Because we have lots of questions.
No, no worries. That was almost true.
Okay, thank you so much.
I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
In closing, I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the work of the New York City Commission on Human Rights here today with you. I'm proud to have this chance to speak to you on behalf of an agency that strives to ensure that no one who lives, works, or visits New York City experiences bias or discrimination because of their race, color, age, religion, creed, national origin, disability, gender identity, and expression, sexual orientation, or any other protected class. I look forward to continuing to champion the human rights of New Yorkers with the leadership of the Adams Administration and the support of the New York City Council. Thank you so much, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you. Something I picked up in your testimony.
Yeah.
It says the Commission has a headcount of 122 with 107 active staff. Does that mean there's 15 vacancies?
We have, we currently have 15 vacancies. Thank you, Councilmember, you're correct. We are, we currently have 15 vacancies. We are continuing to work to fill those vacancies. We actually have two new staff members joining us in the next few weeks.
Got it, okay. As nearly 40,000 asylees have come through the city in the past year, the city has spent at least $1 billion to support them and plans to spend $4 billion in total, these individuals who have the same basic rights to emergency services as any New Yorker. Does CCHR have a responsibility to service the asylees?
CCHR has a responsibility to cover anyone who calls New York City home, and so, anyone, regardless of their immigration status, will be covered under our law. We would not know if asylum seeker comes to our agency because we do not ask for immigration status. We are mandated to ensure that they come under the New York City Human Rights Law.
So, does CCHR receive any funds related to the asylee effort?
Our, what, by CCHR mandating, by us enforcing our law, we provide services to New Yorkers, but we do, our budget is not tied to our mandate, so our budget is not tied to providing any service to anyone that comes into our, our agency. But Commissioner Raj, if you want to elaborate more on that.
As the Commissioner said, that we are mandated to serve anyone who either lives, works, or visits New York City. We do not ask what the person's immigration status is, and so, everyone served, if they have faced discrimination, then the Commission will assist them. We don't get specific funds to assist a specific group of people, whether the asylum seekers or anyone else.
So, does CCHR coordinate with any of the other agencies that are involved in the asylee effort?
Through, through our Community Relations Bureau, we have partnerships with sister, with sibling agencies, and we do coordinate if there's events going on. We go and do tables, days of visibility, so yes, we do collaborate with our sibling agencies.
The Bias Response Team. What is the budget for the Bias Response Team, and how has it evolved over the past couple of years?
Our Community Relations Bureau handles cases and instances of any biases or discrimination happening within our agency. We don't, we don't have a separate budget for a bias response team. It all lives under our Community Relations Bureau unit. Commissioner Chaudry, if you want to elaborate more on how that unit, the work that is done under CRB.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So, as Commissioner mentioned, all our Community Relations Bureau staff work towards prevention of bias, hate, and discrimination. And our, the budget for the Community Relations Bureau is, the PS budget for Community Relations Bureau is 2.5 million. We are, outreach and education is also, while CRB is the, bears the half of the mandate of outreach and education, it is also done in partnership with fund, budget from our communications and other teams as well. And in our provincial work, we ensure that we are doing, you know, different aspects of it, so there is bystander intervention trainings, there are trainings to foster understanding of different communities, there are talking circles, there are days of visibility when an incident has happened. So, that is like the broad aspect of like the different parts of our, the work that Community Relations.
So, what are the primary expenses?
Because of our mandate in the law, our, the budget for CRB focuses on PS, and then we have the, other-than-personal funds to do trainings and outreach and days of visibility and, and work with our comms team to ensure that we are continuing to promote the work that CCHR does. So, the bulk of the money, the bulk of the budget goes to P, to the PS side, to ensure that we have the team to go out into the community.
Are there other grants or external funding sources?
We, whenever possible, we work, we aim to try to do partnerships, but a CCHR's budget is basically the budget that we get from, from the City of New York, from OMB.
So, the Bias and Hate Prevention and Intervention Team that respond to bias-based incidents, in the mayor's management report in FY22, there were 104 responses to bias or hate prevention intervention, which is compared to 383 during the same period of FY21. So, could you point to why, or explain why there's been a decrease in responses for the team in FY22?
Sure. So, as we had discussed last year as well, in FY, beginning of FY22, we revamped our approach to bias and hate prevention. Initially, all were responses to incidents. We moved away from there, looking at the more holistic approach to prevention rather than just responses to incidents. We are still responding, but our focus now is building on prevention, solidarity, and community building through our tools of engagement, like multilingual bystander intervention trainings, talking circles, more community conversations. We are part of the Mural Initiative around building, building bread, sorry, breaking breads, building bonds, so that, again, the focus is prevention and less on just responses to incidents.
Okay. Let's talk about the Law Enforcement Bureau. Law Enforcement Bureau enforces the New York City Human Rights Law. What was the total amount and dollar value of the settlements made in FY22, and whatever you can tell me currently in FY23?
Sure, I'll let Commissioner Raj, let you, under her leadership, has been able to make those settlements, so I'll let her elaborate on those.
As the Commissioner noted, we had over seven, about 7 million in settlements, damages to complainants who came forward and the cases were settled with us. We also had about 800,000 in civil penalties that are paid to the city and not to the Commission itself.
Do those settlements generate revenue for CCHR?
No, the, the settlements are, the damages are paid to the individual claimants who come forward, and the civil penalties are paid to the City of New York, not to the Commission itself.
And what are the most common types of complaints that the LEB enforces?
Most of our complaints are in employment. It's usually reasonable accommodations, discrimination on the basis of gender, so sexual harassment, gender identity, race, and then in housing, you have source of income, reasonable accommodations again, and in public accommodations, it's, it runs a gamut of a lot of different things, whether it's race, or religion, or disability.
So, if an individual files a claim with the LEB, and the LEB attorney investigating their case doesn't represent them, but instead is a neutral investigator, why doesn't the Commission provide legal support in that situation?
So, I think it's imperative under our law.
So, I think it's imperative, under our law, that we maintain neutrality, because we are an investigative body that's supposed to represent all New Yorkers. So, when someone comes to us with a complaint, we are mandated to ensure that there's no violation of the New York City Human Rights Law. We don't assume that there has been a violation. We do the investigation. If we find there's no violation, then the case gets dismissed. If there is a violation, then we will work with the respondent and look at what the size of the respondent is, what the sophistication of the respondent is, what their financial resources are, in order to come up with a solution. And then, of course, if it is, if the case doesn't get settled and there is a violation, it goes on to litigation and then a trial at oath. So, I think it's really important for us to be neutral, to see whether, to determine whether there is a violation. We're not representing just the complainant, we're representing, you know, everyone. And also, we also do commission-initiated work, where the commission itself determines that there may be a pattern and practice of discrimination, and the commission can either file a complaint, send a request for information, send a cease and desist letter, and say, "You need to stop doing, you know, violating the law, but you also need to, these are the ways you need to respond to us," and then correct the violation.
How much of the work that you do is proactive versus reactive?
I don't have the exact numbers, but we don't always, so when someone comes to us with a complaint, sometimes the commission will join that complaint. So, it's not just that the commission does commission-initiated work, isolated without a complainant coming forward. We also join sometimes when we think there's a pattern and practice that we need to correct. And through our settlements, we make sure that there is a change in pattern, in the policies and practices. Policies can be great, you know, how it is actually practiced on the ground sometimes is a problem, so we want to make sure that's corrected. We make sure that there's training, and we, as the Commissioner said, in housing cases, we have done set-asides and broker incentives that the parties have to agree to. In employment cases, we've actually asked employers in Fair Chance Act cases to work with reentry organizations, so that we make sure that more people are able to come into the workforce. We have also had settlements where we had the respondent agree to not having the arbitration clause enforced. So, there are different innovative ways in which we try to make sure that there is no violation as, going forward. It's not just that one individual's, you know, issues that are resolved.
Councilmember, in terms of LEB, proactive work will fall under testing that the LEB Department would do. So, we have testers on our staff who we proactively will send out to employment, housing, or public spaces, to initiate or look for instances of discrimination.
Okay. Last question for me, I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair, and an issue that's important to both me and my co-chair was the salary transparency law that we passed, which, you know, was a big step towards pay equity for all New Yorkers. Can you talk to us about how many claims your agency has seen regarding pay transparency since the law was enacted?
So, we have received quite a few tips from more than 300-plus tips from the public about pay transparency. We haven't to date received many complaints that people have filed with us, but we've also done quite a bit of testing in the area.
So, I think I know the answer, but sort of rhetorical, explain the difference between a tip and a complaint.
So, a tip is somebody who comes forward and just wants to give us the information. Sometimes they want to come forward and give us their name, but don't want to file a complaint.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean it's happening to them, but they notice something, or...
It may be happening to them, but they may not want to come forward for many reasons.
Sure.
Because they may be afraid of retaliation, although retaliation is a provision in our law, that's a violation. But people are concerned sometimes about coming forward. So, there are very, there are different reasons people want to leave us just a tip. And so, then the commission decides whether we are going to take action or not, depending on the information that we have. And we also, like I said, do testing in the area, so we have, you know, we have moved forward with that, too.
But I also just want to highlight, Councilmember, that for pay transparency, when the amendments were done, there's a cure period. So, that's the period where if we receive a tip or a complaint, we're actually reaching out to the employers, just letting them know, "You have X amount of time to cure the violation." If not, then we will continue to do investigation.
And does the agency feel that this law is enforceable?
The law is certainly enforceable, that's why we've been doing testing, and we have, you know, proceeded with investigations.
Okay. Okay, we've been joined, let's just do a check-in here. We've been joined by Councilmembers Velasquez, Osay, Ayala, Stevens, Joseph, Carr, Hanks, Baron, and Sanchez. Last question on the pay transparency, and then I want to turn it over to my co-chair. What training or resources has CCHR given its employees to help them understand the legislation?
Whenever our law is amended, we do internal in-house trainings to then ensure that our staff is prepared to go out into the community and educate the public on those amendments of our law. So, we do in-house training.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Nantasha Williams. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to start with just some broad questions about your strategic plan. So, Commissioner Palma, you've been at the agency for some time now, and we are interested in understanding some of your goals as CCHR, as Chair and Commissioner. So, can you share with us what your goals are and how the council can support your goals?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember William. You know, since coming on, the goals and overarching vision for the agency has been to build a New York City where people can live, work, thrive, right, free from discrimination. And during the time that I have been here, the agency, you know, we have focused on creating an agency that's accessible, visible, and user-friendly to New Yorkers. We, you know, early on, I realized that we need to focus on preventing, preventive work and being more proactive, going out into the communities, and so that, we have been building out our community centers in each of the five boroughs. We are now, we started in Queens, we're doing intake at those centers, so then we don't have, we don't, so New Yorkers don't have to travel to the central office to give us a tip or file a complaint, but actually can see staff at those centers. And so, it's been extremely important for us to be at the forefront in the community to meet people where they are.
Thank you. And given that amazing goal, do you believe that CCHR is adequately sized to fulfill those goals? Would you like to see any increases in the budget and headcount?
Thank you. I think you will hear from any agency that sits here, right, you can always do more with more, and we always welcome more. Our agency, to fulfill our mandate, our agency, our budget is not tied to our agency, right? We're mandated to enforce the Human Rights Law, and so we will, we have, and we will continue to do that. Obviously, we are always talking to OMB to make sure that the needs of our agency are met. As you can see in FY '24, we did receive 17 new lines to increase our capacity, and we will continue to work to ensure that through that capacity increase that our mandate is met.
Thank you. What do you see as the largest challenges CCHR is facing?
Like I stated before, I think when I first came on, it was making sure that New Yorkers knew who we were, that New Yorkers knew that they had an agency where if anyone's rights have been discriminated against, that there was an agency that can help them. And so, visibility, I realized was one of the biggest challenges, and through the work that we're doing now in expanding our CSCs and our communications campaigns that we have going on, we were trying to address that challenge.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll turn over to some new needs. So, this plan did include one new need for the Source of Income Unit that we will get into a little later, but did CCHR request any new needs that were not funded? What were those requests, and did you receive any feedback from OMB why the requests were not funded?
CCHR submitted a proposal early on to OMB, and it was the proposal for the 17 new lines, that proposal was funded.
Awesome. Okay, now I will ask you a few questions about staffing changes, and so, if you could share with us, how many vacancies CCHR currently has?
Currently, we have 15 vacancies at CCHR. Again, we have two new member, staff members that will be joining us in the next two weeks.
Do you believe the reduction of the budgeted headcount has had a negative impact on CCHR's core function of enforcing the Human Rights Law and educating the public? I know you said you're going to get 17 new lines, but do you feel you've been impacted in any negative way?
We have not been impacted in any negative way, and I would just repeat that our budget is not tied to enforcing our mandate. And so, our staff is small, but diverse and dynamic, and continue to ensure that our law is enforced whenever we see violations happen.
Can you explain what you mean when you say that your budget is not connected to the mandates that your agency has?
We have to, we have to enforce the New York City Human Rights Law, right? And so, our budget is not connected to that mandate.
Okay, but it's fair to say that if your budget is impacted, it might affect how you're able to comply with the law?
We are, as a right of our agency, and so, we have to, if complaints come to us, if tips come to us, we have to continue to enforce the law and continue to investigate them.
Okay, and this is actually not one of my questions, but now I have a question about capacity. So, you know, because you have this mandate, you have to enforce the law, what happens when you don't have the necessary attorneys to address a tip or complaint? So, when we think about caseload, is it fair to say that there's proper caseloads? Are attorneys taking on more cases than they should be taking on? Same question for investigators, or any other person who's carrying a caseload?
Thank you for your question. So, are attorneys, are investigators, we don't have separate investigators from our attorneys. Our attorneys take the cases from the time of intake all the way up to trial and beyond. And so, we have managed their caseloads pretty well, I think, and it's hard to tell what's an appropriate caseload, because it all depends on the complexity of the case, and it's on a case-by-case basis.
So, what's the average caseload of an attorney?
I don't think there's like an average caseload, because it all depends, again, on the complexity of the case. So, you can have three cases that are very complex, that would take up most of an attorney's time, and then somebody else may have, you know, not that many complex cases.
Is there a range? Like, can you say, like, oh, attorneys typically have between 10 to 20 cases?
I mean, I think it goes anywhere from, there are people who have 10 cases, and there are people who have 40 cases, you know, so it just runs the gamut. It depends on each person's...
So, are you making those decisions? Like, are you looking at the type of case when you're assigning cases, and then, I guess, providing some level of like supervision, or maybe not you, but someone else, to say, "Okay, I know you have X amount of cases, this particular case is more complex than another case," to make sure it's balanced? Or do you have attorneys having way too many cases?
So, our supervising attorneys, and me as the Deputy Commissioner and our Assistant Commissioner, are always looking to see whether the attorneys are, you know, have an appropriate caseload or not. We always have an eye to that, and we're always working with the attorneys to make sure that they're not overburdened with cases.
Okay, I actually think this is a nice segue to the next range of questions that I have, which is specific to employees performing important investigatory matters and enforcing the Human Rights Law, but of course, there still can be difficulties in retaining talent. So, if you can share with us what CCHR does to incentivize staff retention?
So, we have been focused, the past year, we have been focused on doing staff development and trainings to address the issue of retaining talent and attracting talent to the agency. We've also have worked with OMB to change, increase salaries for some of, for some of the attorneys within our units, and having attorneys move up promotionally from level ones to level twos, and I'll have Deputy Salasar, Deputy Commissioner Salasar, elaborate on the work that she's done with OMB to be able to address this issue.
And can you just share what the salary range is for the different level attorneys?
Sure. So, as the Commissioner has stated, we have promoted and elevated staff wherever appropriate. We have promoted agency attorneys from level ones to agency attorney level twos. So, the incumbent rate for an agency attorney level one is about 63,000 and some change, and then, actually, the starting salary, the incumbent rate is about 72,712. An agency attorney one would start, I mean, agency attorney two would start off at like 71,000, and the incumbent rate is about 81,000, 82,000. So, we've been doing that, but we've also noticed that when we posted for agency attorney level two positions, we were getting a better pool of candidates. So, we've been, we've changed our agency attorney level one positions to attorney level two positions, and then, as the Commissioner has stated, we are offering professional development opportunities, and we're really trying to foster a, an agency that prioritizes wellness and engagement. So, we have been doing different activities to engage the staff.
Okay, so, I love when these questions follow what you're saying. So, how does the pay discrepancy between city agencies and private practices affect the recruitment and retention of lawyers for city agencies, specifically yours?
So, people are drawn to our agency's mission, and we're extremely fortunate for all of those who are interested in working at our agency, but we noticed that the private sector compensation models are different than government, and so what we found is that cities' pay rate is more comparable to the nonprofit sector than it is to the private sector.
Okay, the last question on this topic, before I just move to two more topics and three, and then I'm done. So, are you able to share with us the current turnover rate of lawyers within CCHR?
We do not have that information today, but we know, I mean, as you can imagine, the majority of our vacancies are agency attorneys, and so, again, we're really trying our best to recruit and retain. And so, for recruitment, like, we're really working hard with alumni networks of law schools, we're working and reaching out to a wide range of bar associations, just in our efforts, again, to attract and, yeah, attract agency attorneys and just people in general to our agency.
Okay, on to Source of Income, which has been a hot-button topic, and last year, I know this council, under the leadership of Speaker Adams, and of course, our Finance Chair, we really push to get increased funding to support this unit. Are you able to provide the fiscal 2024 budget for the Source of Income Unit and the actual headcount as of this month? And I do know it's embedded within LEB, and there's like these various discrepancies. So, if you could try to share or answer that question, or at least explain the overall headcount for folks who might be working on source of income issues?
Thank you, Councilmember, and you're correct. The Source of Income Unit doesn't have a separate budget, it is embedded into the work that the LEB office does, unit does as a whole. The bulk of the 17 lines, the bulk of those lines will be going into LEB, and will be addressing the needs of staff attorneys. I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Salasar to talk about how we have been working with OMB and working internally to identify what that work can look like.
Yep. So, for law... So for Law Enforcement Bureau, and I know that you understand the complexity of it, but just to give you an idea, so our budgeted headcount for law enforcement is fifty-five. We currently have forty-three active employees in LEB. In the Source of Income Unit, we have ten budgeted lines for SOI, and we have nine active employees there, so we only have one vacancy. Then again, we're working very hard to fill. And so the budget for LEB, including OTPS, is about four point two million dollars. And again, as the commissioner mentioned, the majority of the positions that are, the majority of the seventeen lines that we're getting in FY24 will be used for LEB, but to field inquiries, process communications with New Yorkers, and to prosecute, of course, violations of the law. But we also have some of those lines that are going to support other departments that may indirectly support SOI, so that can go for education, outreach, appeals, communications, and marketing.
But I also, before we move on, council member, I also want to recognize that we were here last year and we did not have staff members dedicated to SOI. And that's not true today. Today, we have nine dedicated staff members to work on SOI in our LEB department.
Do you think that the ten, I know you have nine active, do you think that ten is enough to fulfill SOI buildup and to address this very prevalent issue?
So while those ten lines are dedicated for SOI work, as we've mentioned in the past, and I've mentioned in my testimony, LEB as a whole works on SOI, on SOI work, right? So the SOI work is not limited to the ten, to the ten staff members in those lines. Do you want to add anything, Commissioner?
I will just add that in the Source of Income Unit, what we're really proud of is not only the litigation that we do where people come and file complaints. We actually have interventionists who are there to make sure that people who come to us saying that they have been denied a housing opportunity by a broker or by a landlord, we are able to intervene immediately without having to go through the whole litigation process. Litigation always takes time. We're able to intervene right away and able to kind of get them the housing opportunity that they had been denied immediately. So it's a pretty immediate, we try to resolve it within thirty days.
Who's doing the intervention? Is it the attorneys or other staff?
So we have interventionists who actually are very well-versed in housing vouchers and the whole process of getting units inspected and getting people into housing. But of course, they are supported by the attorneys within the unit and by the supervisors of the unit.
How many, I never knew that you guys had specific people focused on this. So how many interventionists do you have? And is that their official title?
They are, they, I mean, the office title is interventionist, but, you know, there are other titles that are the civil service titles. But we have four right now who are interventionists, and then we have two people who are working part-time to help them, so.
How many active source of income cases do you have?
I don't remember. Two hundred, I think.
I'll give you the exact number, but it's around two hundred and fifteen.
Okay, this is really my last question. It's just about the processing, investigation, and determination of complaints. So in fiscal 2022, there were three hundred and eighteen complaints filed and six hundred and sixty-seven closed. Additionally, the average age of a complaint was five hundred and three days. What is CCHR's goal for the time it takes CCHR to complete an investigation? Why is that the goal? And if you could describe the process of a complaint from an incident to its determination with CCHR? And last but not least, just share with us what parts of this process take the longest?
So when someone comes to us, I'm talking about, I'll talk about the individual complaints rather than the commission initiated first. So when someone comes to us with a complaint, they meet with an attorney who does an in-depth intake. If it is jurisdictional and there is a complaint there that's a violation of our law, or we think that there is, then a complaint is filed. We actually draft the complaint, and the complaint is filed. It's served on the respondent. The respondent then has a chance to answer and submit a position statement. Once that's done, the complainant has a right to rebut after reading the position statement and the answer. So then it's fully submitted. Our investigation then starts, the formal investigation starts. We do interviews of witnesses, of the respondent themselves, of the complainant if we need to talk more to the complainant. We also ask for documents, depending on, you know, what the investigation is about. Once that's all received, then we go ahead and make a determination as to whether there was discrimination or not. If there was no discrimination, the case gets dismissed. If we think, if we determine that there was discrimination, the case, at any point, of course, the case can settle, and they do settle at any point. If we determine there is discrimination, we will issue a probable cause finding, and the case can get referred to oath for a settlement conference, of course, and then trial. So that's the process. After trial, the administrative law judge at oath issues a report and recommendation. That comes back to our commissioner for a decision and order, which is why there's a sort of a wall between the Law Enforcement Bureau and the commissioner, because she's the final adjudicator of that complaint.
Which part of that process takes the longest amount of time?
The investigative process takes the longest.
Okay. And similar to what you said about the source of income cases where you like to have them resolved in thirty days, is there a specific goal that you have in completing investigations or completing the full process? Because the average says five hundred and three days, and I know this is for all of the different cases. So is there a goal, an internal goal, where you say, we need to finish these cases in, you know, six months, three months, or?
So just to clarify, the thirty days I was talking about was for the pre-complaint interventions.
Oh, okay.
To determine whether it can be resolved in thirty days. If not, we then make a decision whether we need to file a complaint and proceed with litigation, so that we're not having that person sit around for the longest time waiting to get it resolved. I mean, sometimes it goes a little longer than thirty days, but that's our goal, is to have it resolved within thirty days. As for the other cases, I think it's hard to tell. Again, I'm gonna say that the cases are, each case is different. It's hard to tell, you know, how long, you can't just have an arbitrary time period for it. It just depends on the complexity of the case, what kind of case it is, who's involved in the cases. All those matter as to how long the case takes to litigate and complete.
Okay, thank you. You know, I appreciate all the work that you do. We do get complaints that the time it takes to process these cases is not due to necessarily the complexity of the case, but due to the lack of resources that your agency has. And I know you have an obligation to present your testimony in a particular way, but I stand very firm that we, as a council, have increased your mandates. And as you say, it's not necessarily attached to your budget, but it does affect your ability to deliver on such critical services. And so I do hope that you have put your best foot forward here in this budget to make sure you do have the necessary resources and staff to be able to process cases, to be able to proactively test for cases, because these are the complaints we do get from advocates around your ability to robustly address these potential civil and human rights violations. So thank you so much, and I know we'll turn it over to questions from colleagues.
Thank you, Chair. We've also been joined by council members Powers, Farias, and Brewer. We're gonna start with questions from Councilmember Richardson-Jordan.
Hi, thank you for being here. Thank you for the work you do. There were two, there are two aspects that stood out to me that I wanted to ask about. The first is around the mediation, the volunteer mediation. Could we just hear a bit more about how many folks use that option, that service? And what is the cost in terms of your budget and staffing for the mediation?
Thank you, council member, for your question. There's no cost associated to mediation. It's an office that lives within the office of the chair at the commission, and Commissioner Savna Raj can speak to the process of what the work is.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. The way it works is that the Law Enforcement Bureau is the one that refers the cases to our mediator, and the requirement is that both the complainant and the respondent is represented. So both of them have to be represented, then it can be, it can be referred to mediation. Once it's referred to mediation, the Law Enforcement Bureau has no idea what's happening with it. If it doesn't get resolved in mediation, it comes back to the Law Enforcement Bureau to then investigate and litigate.
I see. So both parties agree to do it in mediation? And how often does this happen? Do you have a sense of numbers?
Well, our mediation has pretty high numbers in the cases that have been settled. I'm not sure exactly how many cases, it just fluctuates, the number of cases that are referred, because we determine by looking at a case whether it's a good candidate for mediation and whether both parties are willing to mediate. Sometimes we think it's a great case for mediation, and then one party doesn't agree, so it doesn't go to mediation.
Council member, I think in my testimony, that was the part that I reached when then I summarized, was FY23, our Office of Mediation mediated forty-five cases.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I also just wanted to ask about domestic workers. There's no doubt in my mind that this is a space where attention is needed. I think abuses are happening. We have a lot of black and brown women. I wanted to ask particularly, you said you address it regardless of size, but are there interventions that exist particularly for single-family homes with cases of domestic workers? Is it just if they report it to you, or is there any proactive effort or education happening?
So any, anyone, right, for domestic workers, it could be one individual in the household, they're covered under the human rights law. Our proactive approach, right, comes in forms of training, the outreach, visibility. We've done, we geared up with a communications campaign before the law went into effect. So we were, we did partnerships with council members and local community partners. We also partnered up with SBS, right, to make sure that we were in the business corridors, taking the information about the amendments of the law and when it was gonna go into effect and how the law was gonna protect domestic workers.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Joseph? Okay.
I'm sorry, just.
Sorry, if I may just add to what Commissioner mentioned, we also know that domestic workers, because of different reasons, are a hard-to-reach community. So we ensure that our partnership is with groups like National Domestic Workers Association, hand-in-hand, other cooperatives, and we are also doing, as part of the outreach, going to parks and playgrounds and engaging one-on-one. So that's all part of the outreach strategy. Thank you.
That's excellent.
Rita, go.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. Good to see you always. I have a few questions. What happened with the specialized unit for gender-based violence and the source of income discrimination restored under the previous commissioner?
So we are always, we have, we don't have a gender-based harassment unit as such, but all our attorneys handle gender-based harassment cases. And I'm sorry, you asked about the source of income?
The base, the source of income discrimination restored under the previous commissioner.
So we do have a source of income unit that handles source of income discrimination, but as the commissioner mentioned, it's not just the source of income unit that's limited to handling source of income cases. If we need other attorneys to handle it, then everyone in the Law Enforcement Bureau handles it.
Council member, I would add that we are not, we currently, at this moment, have ten dedicated lines within the LEB unit to address source of income. So we have ten dedicated lines, nine of them are filled, and we're continuing to seek to fill the tenth line.
Thank you. What are the salary for attorney one positions? Are there any competitive to market for newly graduates?
So for an attorney, I mean, there's different levels of attorneys, but as previously mentioned, we, the starting salary for an attorney level one is about sixty-three thousand if they don't have city experience, if they become an incumbent because they already have city experience, and that incumbent rate is about seventy-two thousand. But as we mentioned, we are getting a better pool of candidates for attorney level twos, and so for attorney level twos, the starting salary is about seventy-one thousand, and if they become an incumbent, it turns into, like, eighty-one, eighty-two thousand.
So have that made it difficult for hiring and retaining senior attorneys? What is the plan to hire competent and knowledgeable attorneys and how you plan on retaining them?
Sure. So we are actively working with bar associations, alumni networks of law schools, in our effort to promote our vacancies, to attract the best and most qualified candidates. We are also, as I mentioned, doing professional development internally, just to make sure that we're retaining, right? Because we can attract them, but then if they're leaving while someone else is coming in, it kind of defeats the purpose, right? So we are, we're doing, I think, a multi-pronged approach here to recruiting, retaining, and doing everything that we can within our resources to retain and attract attorneys.
And council member, continuing to work, right, with OMB and the Mayor's Office of Efficiency, we know.
To raise the salary.
That this administration is committed to ensuring that we attract talent into the vacancies that we currently have, and so we continue to think through innovative ways to do that.
Attract, retain them as well, and give them living wages. How easy is it for the commissioner to assign more budget towards hiring more senior attorneys?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Sure. How easy is it for the commissioner to assign more budget towards hiring more senior attorneys? Are you able to assign more money to hire a senior attorney?
So I would, I would say, right now, we had submitted a proposal to OMB that was, a new needs proposal that was funded, and so the bulk of those seventeen new lines that CCHR is getting is gonna go towards the LEB department for attorneys. And then, within our own structure, we have attorney level threes where we can promote those senior attorneys into those positions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Councilmember Stevens?
And supervising attorneys.
Hello, good morning. So I just have a few questions. So I was just recently meeting with a group of advocates around disabilities, and one of the things they were advocating for was their own office of disability, because they feel that this commission doesn't have the right size or capacity to deal with the complaints and issues that they have. So can you talk to me a little bit about, like, how many staff you have dedicated specifically to folks with disabilities, and what does that look like? Because currently, what they were telling me is that the capacity in your office around the complaints that they have, they don't feel like they're being heard, or you don't have the staff to actually adequately address some of the issues.
Thank you, council member. I would defer to Deputy Commissioner Raj, but I would add that since my arriving at the commission, one of my, you know, one of the things that I have done is reach out to sibling agencies, and Moped is one of those agencies that we have been talking to and working through to do joint, joint community events, joint outreach, to ensure, right, that there's support from the Mayor's Office of people with disabilities and that they support the work we do as well, and help us highlight the work that's being done there.
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't think they were saying around the work, I just think that for them, it was the size and the capacity, and just knowing the numbers around the number of New Yorkers with disabilities, that because your agency is so small that you don't have the adequate staff to actually address the issues of all the New Yorkers with disabilities who feel discriminated against.
So at the Law Enforcement Bureau, we have something called Project Equal Access, which is, we have two dedicated staff members who actually go out once we get complaints from individuals saying that they have been discriminated against because they're not able to access either housing or public accommodations or employment. They go out and do the actual measurements to make sure that, you know, whether there's a violation or not, whether a ramp can be installed. They're pretty experienced in doing that, so. And then all of our attorneys in the Law Enforcement Bureau, as I said, most of our cases are about reasonable accommodations in housing and in public, and in employment. Of course, some of it is because they don't get reasonable accommodations because of a medical issue, but a lot of it is because of physical access, ability to physically access housing especially. And we have a lot of cases. And we have a lot of cases, I think, that we have actually dealt with where people have not been able to access their housing. So maybe we can do more. I'm not saying we can't, but I think we do our best to address all the issues that come to us through Project Equal Access, through our attorneys, and also through testing. We do quite a bit of testing of public accommodations and housing to see whether they're accessible or not.
Absolutely, I'm sure you guys are doing your best, and it sounds, it's a lot, right? Especially thinking about the number of folks in New York City with disabilities, that's why I was asking for the staffing breakdowns, because I think that there's some inadequacies, right? So you can be doing your best, but let's say if you have a caseload of 150 people, your best might not be good enough, because that's just not the capacity. So do you have actual numbers of breakdowns of, like, how many folks you have dedicated to this? Because like I said, when I was meeting with this group of advocates, their complaint was that they feel like you do not have enough staff to address the needs of the New Yorkers, because they're such a large number. I forgot the number, but it was over, like, you know, a couple of thousand that has disabilities, and they don't feel like you guys have enough staff to do the work that you really need to get done. So do you have a staff breakdown of that?
So we don't dedicate staff to just disability cases. The cases are assigned to all of the Law Enforcement Bureau. We don't have a specific disability unit. We have the Project Equal Access, who are not attorneys, who are the ones going out and determining whether places are actually accessible. But the attorneys are not dedicated to just disability. Everybody actually gets disability cases. I actually have some disability cases that I'm handling, so.
Well, thank you. And Chair, if I could just have one more question?
If I may also just chime in real quick, I know that you asked specifically for the head count, so LEB has 55 budgeted line, and they currently have 43 active employees.
Okay. And just my last question too, and so if a complaint is put in, what does the follow-up look like? Because that was one of the other issues that they have, that they feel like sometimes they'll put a complaint in, and then now there's further discrimination that goes into that. What is the support and after service look like for anyone who might put in a complaint?
I'm sorry, are you talking about retaliation?
Yeah.
Okay. So retaliation is a violation of our law, it's a separate provision under our law. Disability is something that we try to handle also through pre-complaint interventions. That's one of the issues that we try to handle through pre-complaint. So we don't, the person doesn't always have to file a complaint and go through the whole litigation process. If someone calls us and says that they are trapped in their homes, they're not able to access the building because there isn't a ramp, or there isn't a lift, then we will try through the pre-complaint intervention process to reach out to the landlord or the owner of the building to say, you know, this person needs a ramp, and how can we work towards that? If that doesn't work, the pre-complaint intervention process doesn't work, then we will file a complaint and go through the litigation process. Retaliation is a violation of our law, so that will go towards, you know, higher damages and higher civil penalties if it comes, if it goes to trial, or even if it settles. That increases everything, because you're not allowed to retaliate under any provision of our law.
But what does it look like for the support that happens? Because it's, obviously, it's against the law, but so is discriminating, and so people are continuously doing it, and so just thinking about that. But I just want to also say, because I don't have to wrap up, and I'll be done, I know you guys are working really hard, and this is a really hard job, and want to say that, whatever you guys need, however, we can support, we want to do that, but I do think that, you know, you should be fighting to get some more staff, especially when there's so many cases, and even a lot of the work that we're doing in council actually is related to what you guys are doing, and so how do we make sure that those things could be accurately implemented?
Thank you, Councilmember, and we will continue to, right, ensure that we fill our vacancies as well as ramp, you know, ramp up the efforts to fill the 17 lines that we have been, that we now are going to have. I would just add to Commissioner Raj, right, I think in your wanting to know in terms of what kind of follow-up support, once the cases are settled, as part of settlements, some, you know, employers, providers, they have to, part of those settlements require, right, that trainings be done, that the employers or provider, or housing providers are reporting back to us to ensure that they do not continue the practices that led to the investigation or complaint in the first place.
Okay, we have Councilmember Barron, followed by Lewis and Abreu.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioner. I wanted to ask a more macro question. First of all, I think you're woefully underfunded. There's 8.6 or eight-plus billion people in New York City, there's countless agencies. I would say, unscientifically, 99.9% of them discriminate, but that's my opinion, not a fact, so I need you. So with that kind of massive amount of people in New York City, $14 million is an insult to human rights, in my humble opinion. If the mayor wanted to prioritize human rights, because I think racism permeates just about every institution and agency in New York City and America. But the area I want to focus on, two areas, one is contracting, contracting, and I know you have complaints from the public, but also commission initiations, where you can initiate stuff, and I would like for you to look into contracting. Massive discrimination, there's over $21.7 billion in city contracts. That's why Bloomberg became a mayor and didn't accept the salary, because he knew there were billions in contracts. Why would a billionaire want a job that pays $200,000? And when he finished, he started at $5 billion, when he left, he was worth $20 billion contracts. And his buddies, particularly white men, got big money, got rich off of the contracts in our agencies. So I noticed you mentioned the MWBEs, and they usually, but you was mentioning that you fund work with them around advertising and things of that nature, but more deeply, they don't get the real contracts. And I'm not talking about subcontracts, I'm talking about the general contract, the big money, the big contracts usually don't go to black and brown MWBE. And I have to mention black and brown, because now, when you say diversity, or when you say MWBEs, the W, white women, are now gaining more on that than black people. So I want to be clear, when I talk about contracts, I'm talking about black and brown people who are discriminated against, horribly discriminated against. And I'd like to see an initiative, a serious initiative, to looking at, how many of the 17,162 contracts that the city contracts with, how many of them are going to white folk, white women and white men, and how many are going to black and brown people, and what amount, and in what areas? This is very important, because if we get more contracts, we can do better with the economics in our system. That's the first question. And the second one is on the NYPD. Our human rights are being violated every day by NYPD. Stop and frisk is still happening, they just don't fill out the form. So in my beloved East New York, when they stop these young people, they don't fill out a form and say, "I stopped them for nothing," because that's what they would have to say. They don't fill out the form, so it's still happening, and I think that needs to be looked into seriously, because we have a human right, a constitutional right, to move about freely in our neighborhood without being disturbed by police.
Thank you, Councilmember, and as you know, and I mentioned before, the commission is committed and mandated to look into any tips we receive, any complaints we receive, so as we get those, as we receive those tips, those complaints, those calls, we will, you know, investigate them. We, you know, we like to build our partnerships, right? So individuals like yourself are important for us to continue to do the work and raise awareness that this agency assists, and that if anyone in your community is facing any kind of discrimination, right, that they should be directed to our agency. Do you want to add?
Well, Commissioner, I was talking about the commission initiation, not complaints from my community. I just want to, I think the commission should initiate an investigation into contracting into police behavior, not waiting for complaints from people in my community, because quite frankly, a lot of people don't have faith in the system. Yeah, you give them a complaint, and nothing happens, you know, with the CCRB, which is why we want an independent investigative body that is independent from the system. So a lot of people aren't going to complain, because they don't have faith in that. I just wanted to know if you can launch a commission-initiated effort in these two areas.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I hear you loud and clear.
Well, I know you hear me, Commissioner, because you have two ears. I'm just wondering whether you'll do it or not, but I hear you.
Councilmember Lewis, followed by Abreu.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioners, for being here today. Just two quick questions. This is regarding the federal budget. So this year's budget indicates that the commission's budget for fiscal year '24, sorry, for the commission's projected budget for fiscal year '24 is entirely funded by city tax levy, while previous years did not include federal funding. So I wanted to know if you could further elaborate and explain the decision to rely solely on city funds for FY '24 and the potential implications of this change.
Councilmember, we can get back to you for a specific breakdown. I will have Deputy Commissioner Salasar follow up with the committee and your office in terms of the breakdown of the federal funds.
And let me add to that, since you all get back to us. I'm also reading information that it's possible for the commission to swap city funds for federal funds in the next fiscal budget, so FY '25. So it would be great to elaborate on what that exchange or that opportunity would be. And just a follow-up question in regards to Chair Williams' question, and I don't think I understood the response. Does the commission's projected FY '24 budget accommodate funds that will support the amount of staff needed to address issues that may arise with domestic workers, particularly our new asylum seekers that are here? So there may be an influx of new cases. Does the current budget and what the breakdown includes, include staffing and the funding needed for those staffs to address those cases? Thank you.
So yes, I mean, our current budget allows us to handle the influx of cases that we currently have and what we're projecting to get. Of course, as the Commissioner has mentioned before, we could do more with more, but we do have 17 new lines that were awarded to us for FY '24, so we're looking forward to, you know, with those breakdowns and what that will look like for our agency.
And you're not fully relying on the agencies you mentioned earlier for support services and outreach, because there's, appears to be a collaborative agency response for domestic workers, so you're not totally relying on those agencies to support with services. It would mainly be from your commission, correct?
So we do work and collaborate with other agencies, but with regards to funding, like, it's our budget.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you, Chairs, thank you, Commissioner. The issue of human rights in the workplace is a complex one, especially with the rise of remote work. My question, which is a few, is how does the city agency ensure that remote workers are not discriminated against based off of protected classes?
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, we, you know, we have increased, we're working to increase our visibility. We are continuously using social media to ensure that New Yorkers know that the Commission on Human Rights is there for them. We use print media, we use all our communications outlets to ensure that anyone who is, who's working in New York City, right, who is and lives in New York City, is not discriminated against. And so if, again, if we receive any tips, any complaints, we've, if we initiate a commission-initiated investigation, we then quickly try to address the harms being done in that area.
If the work is in New York City, or if the work is supposed to be in New York City, then it's covered by our law?
Yeah, just, you know, given the fact that, you know, employees, previously you would see signs up in the workplace, it would be easier to communicate this information. What barriers have you faced, or in getting this information to people who work remotely, particularly people who aren't on social media, for instance?
So any employer, regardless of remote work, doing work with the city of New York has to follow, right, has to follow the New York City Human Rights Law. And so, again, right, education is a key tool to ensuring that the law is not being violated. So we, there's a visibility, right, increasing our presence in certain communities where we may see a higher, a higher use of remote work, but in ensuring that, right, employers as well as employees know what their rights are under the Human Rights Law.
Has CCHR seen any cases of discrimination in remote work?
While we can't really talk about open investigations, I wouldn't say that there has been a flood of cases that have come to us because of remote work.
Got it. What about enclosed cases? Any idea? In cases that have already had a final determination?
We don't have any cases that have already had a final determination.
All right, thank you so much.
Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Brewer.
Thank you so much, Chairs, and good afternoon, Commissioner and team. Very, very good to see you. I remember when you were the council member and I was a staffer, and so this is a little bit strange. But Commissioner, I recognize my colleagues have asked about the Source of Income Discrimination Unit, but I wanted to start there myself, because, you know, one of the most common comments when I go into my office is, "Pierina," or "Nina," as they like to call me, you know, "Can you give me a list of where I can take my voucher and find an apartment?" That is how rampant Source of Income Discrimination is in my district. It's not, it's not even, you know, it's not even a thought that you could just go anywhere with your voucher, it is that you will face discrimination necessarily. And so I'm happy to hear that, you know, you've mentioned that nine staff has been hired since last year. So my first question is, you know, I see that 17 attorneys and specialist lines are being dedicated to the out-years. What's going to be the timeline for hiring these lines?
Well, our goal at the commission, Councilmembers, is always to hire as quickly as we can, and so again, we're using all of our tools to try to attract, to attract individuals into our agency to ensure that we can staff up as quickly as possible.
Okay, so in an ideal world, if there were, you know, 17, or 17 minus nine individuals available next year, we can hire them in fiscal '24?
Yes, and so again, recognizing, right, that since my arrival at the agency, there were no dedicated staff to SOIN that has grown by nine individuals, and we're happy to have been able to achieve filling those vacancies.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the individual experience, right, that constituent, that person that is facing this discrimination when they're looking for housing, you know, many of those individuals come to council offices, they go to neighborhood nonprofits, and will advise them about CCHR and that they can file their complaints, but the vast majority of these individuals probably will not file. So my next question is, you know, what are the different ways that CCHR is tracking Source of Income Discrimination, aside from formal complaints?
And I'll then let Deputy Commissioner Well, and I'll then let Deputy Commissioner Raj elaborate on the work that her team does. But I would broadly say, generally, one of, you know, one of our best tools in our LEB department is our testing unit, right? And so, again, someone doesn't have to wait to file a complaint or send us a tip, but we can, we proactively do testing around Source of Income to ensure that landlords are not violating the law.
I'm out of time, so if I can just sneak in one more. It is about the coordination between agencies. So, CCHR, HR, and HPD all have different pieces of Source of Income Discrimination work. Can you just describe what the breakdown in activities is across the agencies, how you collaborate?
So, we collaborate not just with the agencies. When you were asking, how do we know about discrimination? We work with community organizations that work with people who are looking for housing and who have vouchers. So, there are different ways. We work with neighbors together, Unlock NYC, lots of other groups that come to us with issues that their clients have faced with discrimination. We also work with HPD and our, actually, our interventionists work with HPD and DSS and the other sister agencies to make sure that people who they're trying to work out interventions for are able to get through some of the, you know, some of the issues that they may have to face with other sister agencies, like an inspection or that needs to be, that needs to take place pretty quickly so that people get into housing.
I'm sorry, if I can just clarify, what is the role of each agency?
So, HPD does the inspections. I'm sorry, I didn't catch who the other agency you had mentioned was.
DSS.
Oh, DSS. So, DSS, we actually don't work that much with DSS anymore because their lines have actually come to us to do the Source of Income work, but we do work with them when someone's voucher is expiring, and we have to work with DSS to make sure that, you know, the voucher doesn't expire. So, we are constantly working with our sister agencies to make sure that people are able to get housing opportunities.
Thank you.
So, just for a point of clarity, Councilmember, we received six lines from DSS, and that's how we have been able to, for Source of Income work, and that's how we've been able to get those 10 dedicated, those dedicated lines. And so, the work now that we do with DSS in terms of collaboration, besides if someone's voucher is expiring, right, if anyone calls DSS or they know of any of their clients that have been discriminated against because of being, of Source of Income, having a voucher, they directly immediately call us and direct them to our office.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, followed by Hanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Annabelle. You're just Annabelle to me, sorry. And I'm Gail. So, my question is about the ramp complaints. I get a lot, and you mentioned it. So, my understanding from the MMR, maybe it was a preliminary, I can't remember, was it there's an 88% increase in complaints, as you heard from Councilmember Stevens, from those who are disabled for accommodations, et cetera. And this is a community that always, and I think legitimately, feels left out. So, my question is just on the ramp. Do you have some ideas? Because I think these owners don't like putting in ramps. And we always call your agency and you're a sponsor, but I must be, there must be many complaints. Can you give me some idea on that one? How many? How it gets adjudicated? And what happens when the person doesn't want to do it?
So, when the, as I said before, Councilmember, when the respondent, the landlord, does not want to install a ramp, which does happen, then we will file the complaint, and then they're liable for damages and civil penalties.
Are you successful in getting, I'm more interested in getting the ramp?
Yes. So, that's why we have the pre-complaint intervention process. So, we first try to get the ramp in by talking to the landlord to see whether they will work with us to get the ramp in. And then, we-
Can you give us not necessarily now some number as to how many complaints you get every year and how you're, how they get adjudicated? Not now, but later.
We can get back to you on that because I'm sure we can pull the numbers on that.
Okay. Source of income, we're all focused on it. I get the same complaints. You know who you maybe talked to, and I want to know in terms of outreach? Brokers. There are brokers who are dealing with this. They love renting apartments. They just love renting apartments because they get money. So, my question is, do you meet with the brokers? Because they tell me the Source of Income, they're afraid to go to the owner and counter the owner. They should be calling you. They don't. Do you talk to the brokers?
We do. We actually, the Law Enforcement Bureau and the Community Relations Bureau actually do a lot of trainings for the brokers. We do monthly trainings for the brokers. Sometimes it's part of our settlements where we require the brokers within a larger brokerage to come and do the training at the commission. It's virtual, so it doesn't like, they don't have to spend time necessarily coming to our commission. So, we do that type of training, but also as part of settlements, we do training.
Okay. I'm interested in telling the brokers, damn well, give me your list of owners who are refusing to take the voucher. Do you do that kind of training?
We do do-
That would be my kind of training.
We do that kind of training, and actually, as part of our settlements, we do have provisions in settlements where we say, "You will have to report to us landlords who are refusing to take."
Because I have been talking to brokers, and they have not been doing that. So, I would suggest that that could be a stronger part. They have hundreds of cases where these folks are not taking those vouchers. All right, just one last question.
Welcome them to contact us, yes.
Well, I'll try. I mean, I think you need to do more outreach to them. What is this, the mayor seems to have a new office for everything. So, what's this Office of Equity? What the hell do they do? And how much money do they get?
Gail, I don't have the budget for the Office of Equity.
What do they do?
They, what, the Office of Equity works to ensure, right, again, that new, there's equitable, there's equitable treatment amongst New Yorkers at SoHo, and we do-
Isn't that what you do?
We work closely, we do work closely with them. We enforce the Human Rights Law.
All right. I'll leave it at that. The other question quickly is hybrid. I know that the DC-37 contract hopefully will deal with hybrid. The reason you can't up your number of attorneys is because you're not hybrid. Do you get that complaint? Are you allowed to talk about it?
Our staff is coming in person. We-
I know, but the reason you can't hire more attorneys is because they can go to any law firm in the city and be hybrid.
We're working, when attorneys come to us and they qualify, we hire them. We have not, we've lost some individuals to hybrid, but that has not been why we have not been able to reach them.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Hanks, and then Farias for final questions.
Thank you, Chair. I could still say good morning for another 10 minutes. So, thank you so much for coming today. I would like to associate my comments with, and the questions of Councilmember Abreu and sort of Councilmember Brewer. I've had several complaints and calls to my office regarding perceived unfair and unregulated remote work, the preference of remote work. So, it seems that certain employees, higher-paid, similarly to attorneys, are given the preference to do remote work where the lower-paid employees are not given that preference. And so, even though the question here is discrimination of, you know, and remote work protections, I think we need to take a look, and I wanted to hear what you had to say as far as, how are we ensuring that employees are treated fairly? If there's a remote work policy, that remote work policy is across the board, is it posted? So, for example, I had a constituent call who had a child that was non-verbal autistic, and they were not given the preference to do remote work as opposed to their colleagues that were higher-paid, higher titles, that were given the preference for remote work. So, if there is a policy of remote work, I know we want to talk about the protections, but we also want to talk about the fairness of how that is dispensed. And so, can you talk a little bit about how we, as the council, and also as an agency, that we're working to make sure that those, that the fairness of remote work is taken very seriously? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks. In terms of the example you highlighted, that definitely falls on the caregiver discrimination, and so-
There will be a complaint filed because I also, you also explained that they don't have, I don't think workers know that they can complain to you. I think this is not even something that people are even looking at as a point of discrimination. They just see it, they feel it, and there's no real written law based on who gets it and when do you get it. And so-
And then, just for a point of clarity, the, you mentioned policy, when you mentioned policy, you're talking about specific, the private sector, our policy, our-
A city worker, right? We're here to talk about remote, excuse me, remote work discrimination protections. We want to know that people are protected if they are working remotely. What I'm saying is how do we determine who gets to have remote work as opposed to someone else getting? There is ongoing complaints that I'm getting from my office that certain employees are allowed to have remote work privileges, if you want to call it that, and others aren't. So, one, are we looking at policies and procedures to do that? And two, how can we inform workers, city workers, that this is a, this is something that they're actually being discriminated against? It's not something that's quite, you know, gelling yet, but it's something that I'm hearing a little bit more often.
So, I would definitely speak to our agency. I mean, and we know, right, that the city doesn't have a remote work policy. The city and, you know, the administration engage in bargaining unit negotiations, and so, there is, right, there should be an outcome from those negotiations. I know our agency, we don't have a remote work policy. We have ours, our team coming into, into the office and/or into the CSCs. And again, if anyone has felt or is experiencing that they needed an accommodation, right, we have our EO team who will work closely with that individual to address the needs that they're raising.
Thank you. We'll talk more offline because I do have an LS request to do just that. So, we'll talk more about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I appreciate your question.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Commissioner. How are you? Great to see you. I just have a couple of quick questions. Are we seeing any increase of, this is around domestic workers and their protections. Are we seeing any increase of complaints for the 24-hour work week of domestic workers? And if any of those complaints go through your office and how they've been navigated?
Like I said before, we can't talk about open investigations, but we really have not received a lot of complaints from domestic work, in the domestic worker protections. I know that the Community Relations Bureau has reached out quite a bit to community organizations, but that hasn't really resulted in a mass of complaints.
Okay, great. And then, I just have two questions around some other items. Have we seen any complaints or issues with the salary range mandate that we implemented last year as the council?
Before we move on to your, to your next question, I just want, for a point of clarity, DWCP is the agency that enforces that law.
Okay, thank you. And then, any complaints around the salary range bill or any issues regarding that?
And so, we have not seen any complaints, individual complaints that have been filed, but we've had a lot of tips, 300-plus tips that have come across about the salary range. And we've also done a lot of testing in that area.
Okay. And is the, are the complaints surrounding employers not listing salary ranges for positions or listing too large of salary ranges? That don't quite make sense.
The tips are a combination of both.
Okay, great. Do you folks have to annually report out on anything like that, or how can we look at that information?
I've just been handed our annual report, and so, I will share it with you on the-
Okay, great. I'll steal, I'll steal that, no problem. And then, my last question is, how often are you folks having to explain the current state condition of a right-to-work state that we are under for employer, employees? Like, when complaints come in and just depending on what discrimination type it is, do any of that, does any of that directly, is in direct conflict with the fact that we're right to work and people might not understand that?
I'm not sure I quite understand the question.
I'm wondering the types of discrimination that we see, right? And if people are, many people I find do not quite understand what right-to-work state means. New York State is a right-to-work state. How often are we educating folks on the right-to-work state status and what that means in terms of the type of discrimination they may or may not be experiencing?
So, all our, all our education programs are focused on the New York City Human Rights Law. So, we talk about, like, when the trainings that we do, the community outreach that we do, are focused on, like, you know, the employment, housing, public accommodation protections under the law, and that's what we focus on.
Okay, so in that employment education, are we discussing us being a right-to-work state or not?
That's not part of our law.
No, okay. Our education is focused on, under the Human Rights Law and the 27 protected classes under that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a two-minute, one, two-minute break as we're way behind schedule, and then we'll hear from the Equal Employment Practices Commission. Okay. I think it's still the morning. Not quite. What time is it? Oh, wow. Okay. We're behind, so we got, we gotta catch up on time. So, good afternoon. Welcome to the second executive budget hearing of the day. We're focused on the Equal Employment Practices Commission. I'm still Justin Brennan, Chair of the Finance Committee, still joined by my colleague, Councilmember Nantasha Williams, Chair of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. Welcome to Executive Director Victor and her team. Thank you all for joining us today to answer our questions. On October 26, 2023, the administration released the Executive Financial Plan for FY '23 to '27 with a proposed fiscal '24 budget of $106.7 billion. EEPC's projected FY '24 budget of $1.3 million represents less than 1% of the administration's proposed FY '24 budget in the executive plan. This represents an increase of $18,000 or 1.4% from the $1.25 million budgeted in the FY '24 prelim plan presented back in January. EEPC projects a reduction of just one position since adoption of the FY '23 budget last year. My questions will largely focus on EEP's auditing process and the 2020, 2022 Racial and Ethnic Classification Report. I now want to turn to my co-chair for this hearing, Councilmember Nantasha Williams, for her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I already made my joint opening statement, but as you all know, I really appreciate the work that you do to ensure that there are equal opportunities for New Yorkers that work for our city. And I look forward to hearing your testimony. As I said earlier, your work is so, so important. And unfortunately, your agency or your commission, as well as CCHR, have historically been underfunded. So, look forward to your testimony.
Just, I'm gonna turn it over to the community council to swear you in, but just in the interest of, of time, if you could just summarize your testimony, that would be great, so we could jump right into questions, okay? Mike?
Good afternoon. You raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and you will honestly and faithfully answer Councilmember questions? Jean Victor? Russell Ferry? Thank you. Maybe you can.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Victor. I am the Executive Director of the EEPC, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss the work of the EEPC. In a nutshell, the EEPC is one of the smallest agencies in city government. Our approved headcount is 12. We are the only agency, I believe, in the state and in the country that does the kind of work that we do. What we do is we, we ensure that city agencies have solid EO programs. We, we want to make sure that people who are employed by the city, particularly women and people of color, are treated fairly, as well as those that seek employment with the city. We audit 143 agencies over a period of four years. We are overseen by a Board of Commissioners. The thrust of my remarks really go towards the, the importance of our role, the importance of our job, the things that we do that try to, we try to prevent the risk of lawsuits and claims and settlements that the other city agencies may be faced with because their programs may not be up to par. Our role is to make sure those programs are up to par. And we feel that our importance is not necessarily in, in how much money we, we take in for the city. It's what we save the city. And, and through risk avoidance, I, I think that our role is, is one that is, as I said before, extremely important. This year and last year, we've been conducting an audit on the underutilization of women and minorities, particularly people of color, in the city, in the city's workforce. We, we are addressing that issue through our research unit, through Russell Ferry, who's our Director of Research, and who's sitting at my right. So, our focus as an agency has been on underutilization of women and people of color. We have a very small staff. Our research team consists of three people. Our audit team, we have three EO program analysts, one manager, and a director. And, and our, as I said, our total staff is 12. There have been times when we've lost personnel. We are going to lose one next week, who's our IT person. That person is the only person that handles IT for our unit. When he goes, I have to pick up those responsibilities. When we lost our Director of Research last year in January, I picked up those responsibilities. When the Director of Human Resources left, I had to pick up those responsibilities. There is really no one else to pick up the responsibilities when we lose anyone to, you know, for whatever reason. Which is why we're asking, you know, for additional headcount. We have no redundancies within our office. And right now, if we were to lose somebody, there would be no ability for us to continue to do our job, because that's how small we are at the moment.
Thank you, and thank you for, for summarizing. Has any, has there been any discussion around something like IT or HR being folded into, you know, a centralized sort of, like, do you need your own IT guy?
Well, we actually do need our own IT guy. And I think that historically, when the EEPC was created, I think it shared services with DCAST, because we still share some of those.
I think that's what I meant. Like, why couldn't DCAST be your, handle that sort of back office stuff?
I don't think there's been much, any discussion around that at this point. And, and we are a little bit specialized, I have to admit. And we, we, our audit unit has its own specialized database. Our research team obviously also has its own database.
Got it. Okay. I just have really two questions. I'll turn it over to my co-chair. There's currently 145 agencies within your jurisdiction, right?
Yes.
Okay. That includes the Office of the Mayor, all the mayoral agencies, this body, the City Council. EEPC is required to audit and evaluate the employment practices of all those agencies. What are the main objectives of the, the auditing process? And how does the EEPC select employers to audit?
So, I'll, I'll answer your second question first. We audit every one of those agencies on a four-year rotational basis. So, when the four years is, comes around, that's when the audit is conducted for those agencies. The audit itself is based on a series of standards that were created to encompass the laws and best practices around certain areas. There are in excess of 50 standards. We select a focus of what we're going to look at at a particular cycle. And this year and last year, our focus has been on underutilization. In prior years, we've looked at sexual harassment. We've looked at HR practices, those kinds of things.
And what type of information or, or records does EEPC typically request during an audit?
So, they request audit, excuse me, I should be saying documents that support the standards that we're looking at, at a particular time. So, for underutilization, we'll request documents that are consistent with the standards around underutilization.
How long are those records kept?
How long are the records kept? By the EEPC?
Mm-hmm.
And accordance with their records retention schedule?
And what rights do employees have during the, the auditing process?
We audit agencies. We don't interact with employees, per se.
And what's, what steps could an agency take if they disagree with the findings of an audit?
So, there are opportunities for the agency to reply back. So, the way the process works is that we will notify the agency that they're being audited. The second step is to let the agency know that these are the documents that we're going to need. Agency submits the documents in a secure environment electronically. We review the documents and make our first findings on whether or not the documents are sufficient, or if there are areas where corrective actions need to be taken. Excuse me, at that point, the agency can respond. They haven't, they have an opportunity to respond. And if they do, we take that into account. We make the changes if, as needed. Then we come out with our final determination. The agency must respond and provide their position on EEPC's findings. And then, at that point, we go into a compliance monitoring stage, or we finish up the audit.
And the 2022 Racial and Ethnic Classification Report, could you, could you summarize the findings of the report?
Well, I'll, I'll turn it over to Russell, because he's our Director of Research, and I'll let him be more specific.
So, the report that we published in this past year, there were a couple of main findings. And one of them is that the sort of lack of diversity in certain job groups pretty much hasn't been changing much in the past few years. Those that are short on Asians or Hispanics or blacks or women, it's been pretty consistent from year to year. And also, in those groups, those job groups and titles that have underutilization, the new people that are being hired are also looking like the people that are already there. So, it's, you know, if they're not diverse to begin with, the people that are getting hired look like the people that are already there, and therefore are not, it's not really being addressed very well. And then also, one other, I think, important finding was that in the past year, and this is probably because of COVID, women have been separating at a rate considerably higher than their current composition in the workforce. We don't have the data yet to dig into why, but, you know, there's certain things that we can make a guess about why that might be.
Is, is the EEPC looking to expand the search to more than the seven job titles?
Yeah, so the report that we published this year includes all of them.
Got it.
And we are currently working with DCAST to get more data on the city's workforce so that we can do much more thorough reports in the coming years.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to my co-chair, Nantasha Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. The first set of questions are about your strategic plan. So, this was for the chair, but he's not here. But if you could share with us, with the experience you have during the time at EEPC, what are you looking to improve at EEPC through the next few years? And what do you see as the largest challenges EEPC is facing?
Okay, thank you for that question. I think that how we see the EEPC moving forward in the next few years would be more of a collaborative agency, where we, you do try to break down silos and work closely, more closely with the agencies. I'd like to go beyond the words of the city charter and go to the spirit of the charter, try to educate the agencies so that, and also take a deeper look at the agency's practices, such as what we're doing along the lines of our pilot program. I'd like to do more audits more frequently and spot-check agencies more frequently, so that we can make sure that we touch the agencies more often than once every four years.
Thank you. So, I want to talk a little bit about your new needs. This plan does not include any new needs from EEPC. Did EEPC request any new needs that were not funded? If so, what were those requests? And did you receive any feedback from OMB regarding those requests that were not funded?
We were not really given the opportunity to submit any new needs. The last few conversations I had with OMB were really centered around the current needs and the pegs. So, we never really had an opportunity to make a request for additional headcount or OTPS funding.
Okay. About staffing, which I know is always a very tough dynamic with your commission. So, the fiscal 2024 preliminary budget is $1.27 million. Of that amount, approximately $1.185 million supports personnel services for a total of 12 positions in fiscal 2024. And the remaining, very small nominal amount of $87,000 supports other than personnel services. This plan includes the reduction of one position with $50,000 in savings. Has EEPC identified this position? If so, what is the position? And how will the reduction impact EEPC's operations?
Yeah, we just recently lost that position when one of our employees resigned. So, you know, we had requested that we be allowed to maintain that position, but unfortunately, we were not able to. How does it impact our operations? Well, that position actually reported directly to Russell, and that was the position that was going to make, be managing our pilot program. So, without that position, then Russell has to take on those responsibilities.
Russell, can you just share your existing responsibilities and how that, that'll increase your workload?
So, as you may know, our primary contribution from a research perspective is based on Local Law 13 from 2019. So, that's the report that we were just talking about, that we publish annually on underutilization. But we're also engaging in some work right now to set up, you know, new projects in the coming years. One of them is the pilot program that Jean is talking about, where we're going to be doing a deeper dive into city agencies and their work in terms of hiring and diversity and inclusion. So, losing that staff person definitely hurts those efforts. It doesn't make them impossible, but it does make it more challenging. And as I had also previously said, that we're working with DCAST to get more data on personnel, to do more thorough work. So, being short-staffed in that regard makes that more challenging. But again, we can meet our basic requirements. There's just not much more that we can do.
Thank you. So, the preliminary plan also included an additional reduction of another position with $90,000 in savings. Can you identify what that position was?
Yeah, we lost, we actually lost two positions this year. The first one I told you about. And then we lost another position when we had an internal movement within our, within our office. And the, we were not, you know, prevented with the ability to backfill that position. That position was on our audit side. It was on the audit team. And, and that obviously impacts the ability to conduct audits. And right now, with our audit team, there is no member of the team who does audits that has more than two years' experience. All of our people are relatively new, and some of them doing this work, this audit cycle, for the very first time. So, we just, having lost that position on the audit team, we really have no senior people at this time.
What percentage of your work is auditing?
I, I would say the, the audit team does 50% of the work. So, it's really a broken, it's broken down 50/50. 50% audit, 50% research.
Thank you. In an agency of only 14 budgeted headcounts, even two reductions equate to a 14% decrease. Do you feel that your budget is sufficiently funded to meet all of your charter requirements?
I would say no. I think right now, we're really challenged. We, we only have an approved headcount of 12. As I said before, we're losing one person next week. We, we really have no redundancy, and I don't believe that our budget is sufficient to continue to carry out our mandate. believe that our budget is sufficient to continue to carry out our mandate.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of unfunded mandates, so it's always very alarming when I hear these things. So the charter requires that E E P C, to audit, evaluate, and monitor the equal employment programs, practices, and procedures of every, every city agency and other municipal entities at least once every four years. With the recent vacancy reductions, how has the E E P C's audit processes and monitoring of agency compliance been impacted by the current state of hiring?
Yeah, obviously, it's very difficult to continue to audit the agencies, the way we've been auditing them. We have, as I said before, new staff. And with the loss of staff, it puts a lot of stress and burden on our existing team.
Yeah, and this, a few questions are probably going to be redundant, and I typically don't like redundant questions. But you guys know, it just really bothers me what is happening at E E P C, and I just want to continue to get on record and reiterate how troubling it is, the vacancies that your commission is facing. So has the E E P C had difficulty meeting the requirement for audits to occur every four years?
Well, it's certainly a challenge. And I think the biggest challenge is that as we struggle to, you know, keep to our schedule, I know last year, we really had to struggle. It was all hands on deck for everyone to participate in order to get the required number of audits completed before December 31st. We are hoping not to face such a burden this year. We're really working hard to make sure we don't. But, you know, there are things that happen during the normal course of, you know, of employment. People go out on leave. People go out on extended leave for medical reasons. I have two people out on leave right now. So for our 12 people, we have two that are out on medical leave. That leaves us with 10. I've gotten, losing one next Friday, that leaves us with nine. And, you know, every day, it becomes more of a challenge to try to keep up.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about enforcement and noncompliance. So following in an audit that finds an entity is not in compliance, the entity has six months to change the practices. If after six months of compliance monitoring, the E E P C determines the appropriate action has not happened, the E E P C will notify the entity in writing, and the entity will receive a determination of noncompliance and is subject to another audit in less than four years. In the 2022 annual report released a couple of months ago, how many entities were noncompliant?
So from a practical perspective, we had one entity that was completely noncompliant this year. And last year, we were re-auditing another agency because they had not been in compliance.
Okay. Is litigation and noncompliance going up in the post-pandemic workforce?
I would, I'm not really sure about that. I would say, if I had to guess, or give an educated guess, I would say it's probably been pretty much the same pre-COVID as it is today. We still get some agencies that are not in compliance. I don't know that it's really changed much since COVID.
What are those agencies? Can you name those agencies that are not in compliance?
It's a little bit sensitive, because we are trying to get these agencies to get into compliance, and maybe that's something that we can offer to you offline.
Is it in the report?
It will be in the report if it continues to be, if the agency continues to be noncompliant.
Okay, no problem. The city as a whole pays millions of dollars' worth of E E O settlements every year. In a previous statement, E E P C claims that investing in E E O personnel can reduce this. Can you provide a description of how this would occur? Is E E P C able to quantify how much this reduction would be?
So it's very difficult to be able to quantify what the reduction would be. I don't really have access to the numbers, the settlement numbers, as I would have liked to. We're just really focused on the fact that once we feel that the agency is in compliance, we know that the potential for lawsuits and other claims has been greatly reduced.
So my final question is about some of your reports, one of your reports. On January 19, 2022, municipal library staff sent a letter to E E P C requesting for the submission of the report. This due date was December 30 of 2021, but E E P C has yet to submit this. When should we see this report, and why was the report delayed?
I'm sorry, what report are we referring to?
It's supposed to be municipal library staff report. They requested, I guess, for you to submit, maybe was it your annual report? But you submitted your annual report. Apparently, the library staff sent you a letter about a report, and the report has not yet been submitted.
I'm not really aware of any report that hasn't been submitted. We submitted our annual report, and we did submit two research reports this year. Last year, we also submitted our annual report and our research report. I'll be at late, but we did get them submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Here we have, first one is shout out P S 376 from Queens, who's joined us today. Good to see you guys. And we want to acknowledge, we've been joined by Councilmember Salamanca. We now have questions from Brooks Powers, Brewer, and Farias.
Thank you, and thank you for being so candid with us. Really appreciate the transparency and the answers so far. Just for clarity, the one position, the IT position that you said you're losing, is that a part of the pegs? Or is that separate?
It's separate from.
Okay. What position is being removed as a part of the vacancy redundancy from the peg that was identified in the executive budget?
So I lost two positions due to cost savings initiatives. One was a backfill for an E E O program analyst, and the other one was a manager of audit.
A manager of?
Audit.
Audit, okay. And the commission is required by the city charter to audit every city entity every four years. Are there entities in the city that the E E P C does not audit? And if so, why are they?
Yes. There are a number of agencies that we do not audit due to jurisdictional questions. So there are times when an entity will say that they're not subject to an audit by the E E P C, and we will determine whether they are legally, whether legally they should be audited or not. And if there's any question, we send that to the law department. So those are the only reasons why we would not be auditing an entity.
And do you feel like the E E P C should audit those entities?
I wouldn't be willing to abide by whatever the law department says.
And does the E E P C perform work outside of its charter mandates to improve equitable hiring practices in the city?
Well, technically, yes. We have our research unit, and our research unit is charged with implementing Local Law 13. And through those efforts, we look at different agencies to see what actually is happening at those agencies, and try to rectify any kind of inequities at that point.
And then, can you provide how much money the city has paid in litigation costs due to equal employment lawsuits? And do you believe the E E P C's activities have prevented litigation against city agencies in recent years?
Well, I can tell you from the Comptroller's report that just recently came out, there was a statement there that said that there was 143, $143.2 million worth of claims that related to E E O. I really can't tell you how much of that was based on the protected categories, because they also included civil rights violations by law enforcement personnel in that number. But obviously, there are claims that relate to E E O in there, yes.
Thank you, Chair. Round two, if I could ask another set?
No, round two. Go ahead.
Okay, it was just one last one, anyway. So can E E P C detail its efforts to educate city agencies on equal employment opportunity, and which city agencies you work most closely with?
Right. We do a couple of things. Last year, we held a symposium. We invited all the city agencies, their E E O officers, their H R officers, and their agency heads. We had a guest speaker from New York University to talk about H R practices, and how to, like, identify glass ceilings, and to address underutilization of women and people of color in city government. In addition to that, we formed an employment advisory council to try to break down silos within city government, and to kind of work with other entities within city government. A part of the council would be, like, D C A S. It would be the law department, O L R, any other agency that kind of deals with E E O, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that council's growing, that committee is growing, and will be growing this year as well.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. You have a great chair out in Bonia, just to shout him out. One question I have is, just picking up on previous questions about saving money. So if the claims, according to the Comptroller's, $143.2 million, obviously, you don't know how much is in the protected category. Do you have any sense of what it has been in the past? Is this a large number, smaller number? Do you have any sense? Because we're all saying to agencies, and I hope that O M B is saying the same, when you save the money, save the city money, then you should be getting the staff to be able to do that. Otherwise, it's penny wise and pound foolish. So I'm just wondering if you have, you know, some sense of that in the past?
Unfortunately, I don't. When I came on, took this role two years ago, I did ask to see if we can find out that number, but we were not able to get that number.
Okay, so maybe we could ask others to try to get you that number, because it does seem to me that that's what you're doing. You're saving the city money. The second question I have is hybrid. So how are you handling with your audits? I know the mayor has said no hybrid. I've been arguing for hybrid, and I'm waiting for the D C 37 contract, et cetera. So how are you handling that issue if you find, I assume some agencies are doing hybrid even though they're not supposed to, because otherwise, you can't keep an agency whole in terms of their staffing? So how are you handling the hybrid issue? I'm supportive of it, not because I think it's, you know, what people should be doing, but I want staff. And if you can find an agency elsewhere, a job elsewhere, where I can be working at home one or two days a week, I'm going to go there. I want city employees to be the best, and I want them here. So how are you handling the hybrid issue?
It has not really impacted the work that we do. A lot of our work is done on computer, electronically, and we've been very successful in getting that done. So it has not been a problem.
But do you find agencies wanting to do that, or they don't discuss it in terms of E E O, I mean, H R, or anything? It doesn't come up at all?
It doesn't really come up at all.
Okay. And then my final question is, what is, you know, we're all wondering, what's a caseload? Obviously, you have a slightly different situation. You're not the Commission on Human Rights with caseloads. But how, given your very challenged staffing, how is the caseload? In other words, how many audits can you, you know what I'm trying to say? How many audits? How does that change? Blah, blah, blah.
So we average about 43, 45 audits per year. And we divide those in, you know, amongst our E E O program analysts, who are our staff members who do the audits. Right now, we have three people that are doing that. Obviously, when we have new people, we can't give them as much, because that would be unfair. So the people that have been here the longest, which is like two years, they get the bulk of it.
Okay. And how long does it take to do, I don't know, like a D S S agency versus perhaps, you know, Commission on Human Rights, you know, very different in staffing?
Right. It's a lot of paper to go through. It takes a couple of months to go through everything and work with the agencies, so that we can get to a final determination.
About a couple of months, is what you're saying?
At least, at least.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have final questions from Councilmember Farias.
I will be quick. Hi, thank you, folks, for coming and testifying. You mentioned you lost two positions from cuts, and it sounds like you agree that your headcount reductions and limited budget is not enough. What has been the admin's response to this from you folks? Have you folks expressed that you really can't take on any more reductions and can't lose any more personnel?
Yes, we've expressed it many times, but unfortunately, it was not changed.
Okay. And is there any appetite, not from yourselves, but from the admin, for improving retention, increasing salaries, anything like that for the titles that we have here that we want to maintain?
That's a good question. I'm not sure of where we stand with it. I did request an increase in salary for one of my personnel to retain that person. I've gotten no response. And that's been for a little bit of a time. It's been a couple of months. So essentially, what I would say is that there hasn't really been a lot of interaction on any kinds of initiatives to really retain personnel at this point.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like, to me, the admin is not really interested in retention, and, you know, streamlining these agencies and ensuring services are not going to be impacted by the vacancy reductions and the pegs that are called. But I appreciate you answering my questions.
Thank you. Good. Councilmember Williams.
Yep, just one final thing before we close out. I know you mentioned that you weren't given the opportunity by O M B to submit for any new needs, and really just talked about your existing needs. So I want to give you the opportunity to talk about any new needs that you have, what your ideal budget would be, you know, your headcount, and total amount for both personnel services and O T P S.
Thank you, Chair Williams. I think ideally, right now, as I said, we have 12. I think ideally, we should have around 17. So that would be an additional five headcount. Those headcount would be distributed between audit and research to help us to accomplish our mandate under the charter and Local Law 13. We have lots of planned activities, lots of things that we'd like to do. For instance, we'd like to look at other kinds of research studies, so that we can make recommendations to the city. We would like to do conferences, symposiums, to educate the city community. Also, we're starting a pilot program to take a deeper look into agencies' practices, and how they address underutilization. What we'd like to do is use the pilot program to just to inform our recommendations, so that when we make recommendations to city council, they are meaningful and valuable. We'd also like to kind of break down some silos, and work with other agencies, and create continuity between E E O officers, so that when we conduct an audit, we've experienced that some of the agencies are not prepared, because they don't have an E E O officer, or their E E O officer has left and moved on to other agencies, or the E E O officer is new to the agency, and they don't know where any documents are. We'd like to, you know, create a document so that whatever agency you're in, the E E O files, documents, all look the same, and people know where they are, know where they can find them, know what they have to do, know what the process is. So, and that would help us immensely in conducting the audit, and I think that would help the agencies in maintaining compliance. Yes.
If there's one thing that I could also add, data. So just to give a concrete example, I know that there was a proposal to require the city to do exit interviews. I don't know where that's gone. To make that data publicly available, so that we could access the survey results and do analyses of that, to get to these questions about remote work, shouldn't cost the city Shouldn't cost the city any money, but would allow us to do some really great things.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much for what you do with such limited resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll hear from CUNY. Thank you, EEPC. Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the final executive budget hearing for today, focused on the City University of New York. I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. We've been joined, in addition to folks who've been here from this morning, we've been joined by Councilmembers Hudson, Feliz, Krishnan, and Schulman. I want to welcome the chancellor and his team today. Thank you all for joining us to answer our questions. On April 26, 2023, the administration released the Executive Financial Plan for FY '23 to '27 with a proposed FY '24 budget of $106.7 billion. CUNY's projected fiscal '24 budget of $1.3 billion represents 1.2% of the administration's proposed FY '24 budget in the executive plan. This represents an increase of $18 million or 1.4% from the $1.28 billion budgeted in the admin's FY '24 prelim. The net increase comes predominantly from $11.6 million added to cover new needs. CUNY's projections also show a decrease in headcount of 235 positions since the adopted fiscal '23 budget primarily from the elimination of vacancies through the administration's PEG, the program, to eliminate the gap. I think we all agree, CUNY has made higher education accessible to New Yorkers of all backgrounds, and has been a true stepping stone for economic prosperity. And this council believes that now is the time to double down on our investments to CUNY and not the opposite. My questions today will largely focus on the impact of federal funding changes, labor agreements with PSC, CUNY Reconnect, and the impact of the PEG reductions on the CUNY Community Colleges. And I want to turn to my co-chair for this hearing, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the fiscal 2024 executive budget hearing for the Committee on Higher Education. I'm Eric Dinowitz, Councilmember and Chair of this committee, Higher Education, and also a proud CUNY alum. I'm pleased to be joined by my fellow councilmembers, Councilmembers Stevens, Brewer, Lewis, Schulman, Krishnan, Feliz, Sanchez, and Baron, and Hanks. Today, we will hear on the fiscal 2024 executive budget, the fiscal '23 to '27 executive capital commitment plan, and the fiscal '24 to '33 capital strategy for the City University of New York. As Chair Brennan mentioned, CUNY's projected fiscal 2024 budget of $1.3 billion is 1.2% of the city's proposed fiscal 2024 budget in the executive plan. Fiscal 2024 budget is $150 million, or 10.4% less, less than the fiscal 2023 budget at adoption. CUNY's fiscal 2024 budget increased by $18 million or 1.4% from the $1.28 billion budgeted in the fiscal 2024 preliminary financial plan presented in January. The increase is the result of a number of actions taken, most significant of which is $11.6 million for agency, for agency needs. In the city council's fiscal 2024 preliminary budget response, the council identified several areas related to safeguarding the education and learning opportunities for New Yorkers. I'm very happy to see that the executive plan includes an additional $5.8 million for CUNY Reconnect to support programmatic services and to help with the expansion of the program. However, I'm disappointed that funding for this very important program that recruits and supports former CUNY students who interrupted their studies, providing them with an opportunity to complete, develop, and expand their academic and professional goals, was not baselined. In the budget response, the council sought the restoration of cuts made to CUNY in prior financial plan, as well as seeking certain investments in CUNY programs. Of the $36.9 million requested for various programs, only $1 million was restored for the Brooklyn Recovery Corps at Medgar Ever College for fiscal 2024 only. CUNY's budgeted headcount for fiscal 2024 is $6,024 in the executive plan. This is a decrease of 235 positions compared to the headcount budgeted at fiscal 2023 adoption. How does this reduction impact programs and students served in fiscal 2024 throughout the campuses? CUNY's commitments for fiscal 2023 through 2027, as presented in the fiscal 2024 capital commitment plan, totaled $699.5 million, 70% greater than the total for the same period presented in the preliminary capital commitment plan released in January. $269.7 million of new capital commitments were added in the executive budget for the redevelopment of the Brookdale campus. Can you provide us with an update on funding that will be used for upgrades and improvements? CUNY's 10-year strategy totals $1.5 billion, and unlike many other city agencies, is well-balanced across the plan, other than a large spike in planned commitments in fiscal 2027 and 2028, when a majority of the funding for the construction of the Brookdale campus is planned. This strategy explains a connection between capital investment and strategic priorities. It is the council's responsibility to ensure that the city's budget is fair, transparent, and accountable to New Yorkers. This includes equity in funding and assistance. As Chair of the Committee on Higher Education, I will continue to push for accountability and accuracy and ensure that the budget reflects the needs and interests of the city. This hearing is a vital part of this process, and I expect that CUNY will be responsive to the questions and concerns of councilmembers. I look forward to an active engagement with the administration over the next month to ensure the fiscal 2024 adopted budget meets the goals the council has set up. And I would like to thank the chancellor and everyone from CUNY for coming in for testifying today. I would also like to thank my staff and the staff of the Finance Division for their help in preparing for this hearing. Thank you.
Okay, Chancellor, now we're going to swear you in. If I see, your testimony is quite long. If you can summarize, that'd be, that'd be great, so we can just, we can dive in. Counsel?
Thank you. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and you will honestly and faithfully answer councilmember questions? Chancellor Rodriguez? Vice Chancellor Batista?
I do.
Vice Chancellor Chiapa? Provost Henzel? Thank you, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan, Chair Dinowitz, and members of the New York City Council Committees on Finance and Higher Education, staff, and guests. I'm Felix Matos Rodriguez, Chancellor of the City University of New York. I am joined this afternoon by University Provost Wendy Henzel, Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista, and the Chief Financial Officer Christina Chiapa. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. In my four years serving as CUNY's chancellor, I've had the privilege of assembling a talented executive cabinet and roster of college presidents of unprecedented diversity, who reflect the city we live in and the students we serve. On behalf of the entire CUNY community, I want to thank Mayor Eric Adams and the entire city council for your sustain and steadfast support. I want to turn briefly now to the recently finalized state budget, and we're very thankful to Governor Hochul and the State Senate and Assembly for significant investments in CUNY that will help us advance academic success and career opportunity programs. The university received $132.8 million in new operating appropriations, of which $50 million is a one-time transformational funds that can be used by both four-year and community colleges, and more than $1 billion for infrastructure funding. The state budget was supportive of our community colleges that have been financially struggling due to declining revenues driven by enrollment and by city pegs. The university fiscal '24 state budget request asked to retain a funding floor for budget stability, and we are appreciative that the state enacted budget includes a 100% funding floor against the fiscal year '22 level. Before addressing the specific proposals in the city's executive budget, I want to address budget cuts caused by the program to eliminate the gap, PEG. The university started this fiscal year with a $20.6 million baseline PEG. Throughout the financial plans issued since that time, that PEG has now grown to $39 million for fiscal year 2023 and $61.2 million for fiscal year '24 baseline. The pegs, along with the decrease in tuition revenues, have had a significant impact on our community colleges' operations, student services, and programs. We have been able to manage some of the pegs' impact with federal stimulus funding received due to the pandemic. That funding, as you know, is not recurring. Let me share how pegs have impacted two significant CUNY-wide programs. One example relates to CUNY's ASAP. ASAP has garnered national attention and has been replicated at 11 institutions across six states. Because of the pegs, CUNY has reduced the ASAP budget by $13 million, leading to a reduced annual enrollment from 25,000 students to 20,000 students. That means 5,000 fewer community college students who receive $1,800 in annual financial support for tuition, subway fares, and textbooks, and thus will take longer to graduate or might drop out. This will also impact the enrollment of our four-year colleges, because there will be less students transferring to those campuses. That is not only a tragedy for those students, but a huge loss of talent for the city and our state. The CUNY Tutor Corps is another program, their budget which has been cut by $4.1 million. The program brings current CUNY students who are studying math, computer science, and education into public middle and high schools to provide tutoring and support classroom teachers. Tutor Corps previously reached 28,000 New York City public school students with placing 275 tutors. With the, with the cuts now, the program is down to 80 tutors and serving just 8,000 students. Here are some other examples of how the pegs and enrollment revenue losses have already affected our community colleges. The impact could greatly, could greatly increase in fiscal year '24 and beyond. First, reductions in staff within the academic advisement, transfer, and counseling centers and financial aid offices limit students' access to vital resources necessary to navigate and complete degree requirements in a timely manner. Information technology staff vacancies impact the time and ability to meet IT needs of the colleges, including having the proper equipment, maintaining such equipment and connectivity, and solving problems that relate to all IT facets of the campus. Reductions in library staff could result in reduced service hours. Campus libraries provide students with onsite access to resources and information while providing a distraction-free environment to study. Staff reductions to maintenance and campus operations can impede the quality of care given to the campus and make it harder to ensure that our campuses are kept safe, clean, and well-maintained, and will increase future maintenance costs and liabilities. Now let me turn to some specific provisions of the city's executive budget proposal. We are grateful that there is $5.8 million for the CUNY Reconnect program, which reengaged almost 17,000 New Yorkers who began college but stopped out before they completed a degree. The initiative was the brainchild of and advocated by the New York City Council Speaker Adrienne Adams, and we thank her for her leadership and her vision. We ask that CUNY Reconnect be baseline, given its importance and success. We ask that CUNY Reconnect be baseline given its importance and success. We're also pleased at the executive budget, baseline 4.8 million for the CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative, which aims to connect 100% of CUNY graduates to careers and advanced degrees by the end of the decade, provides funding for the Brooklyn Recovery Corps at Medgar Ever's College, a paid internship program at Brooklyn-based small businesses and nonprofit organizations, and includes mandatory cost funding for collective bargaining, fringe benefits, energy, and building rentals. One program not included in the executive budget is ACE. This represents a 9.1 million reduction. All ACE students receive comprehensive support that has been found to significantly increase timely graduation rates. We received yearly funding over the last three years and expanded the program to serve 2,800 students. If the city fails to provide these funds, we will have to reduce annual program enrollment by 1,750 students, who currently benefit from $2,800 in annual support for tuition, subway fares, and textbooks. Additionally, the executive budget did not include 1 million in city STEM waivers. We ask that the funding for the ACE and the city STEM waivers is included in the city's fiscal year '24 budget. This would allow for the continuation of these programs that are so beneficial to student completion. Additionally, the executive budget does not include funding for over 30 million in funds provided by the council in fiscal year '23, including funding for the Valone Scholarships, Citizenship Now, research institutes, development educational programs, and the CUNY Diversity Incubator, which will become the CUNY Anti-Hate Initiative. We're asking the council to restore all and enhance a few of these items. Now let me briefly turn to the capital budget. The city's executive budget proposes 1.749 billion in capital funds for CUNY over a period of 10 years. The budget includes historic funding of 479.9 million for the Spark Kips Bay Brookdale Initiative and 10.2 million in new funding from the city's borough presidents. Included in the city five-year capital plan are five new highly priority projects that are part of the concerted effort to expedite our capital renewal work. They are HVAC upgrades of seven buildings at Brown's Community College, $80 million; piping and distribution upgrades at Kingsborough Community College, $20 million; a fire alarm project at the Borough of Manhattan Community College for $12 million; a seawall exterior lighting at Kingsborough Community College at $2.4 million; and a boiler at Queensborough Community College at 1.5 million. Thanks to the city and state's past support, we have already completed 184 projects, allowing us to increase our completion rate by approximately 10%. And currently, we have over 340 active projects throughout the five boroughs with an estimated budget that remains in construction value of about 1.5 billion. The university is also focusing its efforts on climate change, sustainability, and energy conservation targets. As so many of you recognize, CUNY is an essential component to recovering and rebuilding our communities, especially those that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Our internal analysis shows each dollar invested in CUNY returns a benefit of at least $15 to New York's long-term economic prospects. Conversely, each dollar disinvested reduces our economic potential by $15. In other words, a 60 million budget reduction to CUNY would reduce our city and state's economic potential by 900 million in present value. Normally, I will end my testimony sharing with you something I believe in my core, that while CUNY faces a number of challenges, I'm extremely optimistic about the future of our great university. Today, I have to add a caveat, given my profound concern regarding the impact of the pegs to the availability of services, staffing, and support at our community colleges. The pegs also come at a time where our students and our future students are starting to recover from interrupted learning and navigating additional mental and socioeconomic challenges due to the pandemic. Your investment in and support of CUNY builds a stronger, more vibrant New York, one that is inclusive and benefits all New Yorkers regardless of race, socioeconomic status, or immigrant status. I am proud, as I know you are, of the CUNY community and certain of our integral and indispensable role in the lifeblood of New York City. With the sustained support of our New York State and City partners, the future of this great university will continue to be bright. This concludes my testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions that the chairs and the members might have. And if I can take one point of privilege, I would like just to acknowledge some rumors that I've heard that a longstanding friend of this council, a longstanding member of CUNY, this might be his last budget hearing. John Kataowski has served the university with great distinction and honor. There's some rumors this could be his last budget hearing, and I want to acknowledge his great service to CUNY, to the city of New York, and the great friendship that we all have with him, and I wanted to acknowledge that to begin the hearing today. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you to you and your team. Let's just jump right into it, because I know we'll have a lot of questions. There was a reduction of 76 million in federal funding in the FY24 executive plan compared to the adopted budget for FY23. How will the loss of those federal funds impact CUNY, and particularly, how does it impact the community colleges?
Let me let the CFO, Christina Chiapa, take a stab at that.
Thank you. So as the chancellor mentioned, the federal funds have been incredibly helpful to CUNY since the pandemic, and they've really been helping us backfill losses of both pegs and tuition revenue. So clearly, with that funding coming to the end, that combining with the tuition losses, we're down about 35% in tuition plus the pegs, that really exacerbates the financial challenges that we have.
The FY24 executive budget, there was a decrease of $21.6 million to personal services when compared with the FY23 adopted budget. Does this impact headcount, and if so, by how much?
Yeah, so those represent the various peg increases that have occurred during the year. So the last one with fringe plus two other pegs equal that amount. And of course, there is headcount behind those. I think the headcount was 235 in total.
235 lost because of the pegs?
Lost or will be lost, right? Some of that relates just to '24. I'm sorry, so 211 is the total amount of the pegs.
211 headcount lost because of the pegs?
Yeah.
And are there programs that will be, I assume, be impacted by the reduction to the personal services budget?
Yes, I mean, over 85% of our budget, even the programmatic budget, is people. So the numbers I just quoted, 211, we've clearly lost more over the pandemic, again because of the losses of tuition revenue plus the pegs.
There was a decrease of $128 million in OTPS in FY24 compared to last year. What's included in the reductions for OTPS?
So the 77 million you just mentioned of federal funds is part of that, and also a couple of things the chancellor spoke about. So it's not continued funding for things like ACE, the city council initiatives. So if you, we could give you a list, but if you add those up, that's what adds up to that number you quoted.
I mean, do you have a list or a summary of?
I have some of them.
Which programs would be impacted?
Yep, I have some of that information, just give me one second.
Sure, sure.
So the 128, it's $77 million in the federal, and then it's $45.9 million in program funding. 15.8 million is the loan. ACE is 6.8. The CHAMP's program, Medgar Ever's, which really is ACE, is 2.3. Other city-funded program initiatives, 7.6. Citizenship Now, 3. Gateway Course Success Initiative is 2. Food Insecurity is 1. And then also, part of our pegs of $5.1 million was through OTPS. So the total of those equals that 128.
Got it. What's the status of contract negotiations with PSC?
Well, thank you for your question. We had our labor management meeting two weeks ago with the PSC, and we agreed to set some dates moving forward so we can begin our negotiations. I'm very proud that when I became chancellor, the negotiations with the PSC had been stalled for two years, and in a couple of months, we negotiated a five-year contract, which brought substantial benefit to the members, particularly to the adjuncts. So we look forward to engaging with the PSC soon and hopefully be able to get a contract as soon as we can.
Great. My last question, something that's personally important to the speaker and to this council, is the CUNY Reconnect program received a restoration increase of funds in the executive plan, FY24 executive plan. Could you explain why this program, as well as the Brooklyn Recovery Corps at Medgar Ever's, was not baselined?
Well, I mean, we don't get to decide which program gets baseline, right? So you might have a better answer than I do for that. We just think that the CUNY Reconnect, we commend the speaker for her vision, while the first thing she said in that amity speech, we have planned to do 10,000 students, we are 17,000, and we began not with a full year of work. So we intend to do more. The other part that we want to do is we want to retain those students, right? It's not just bringing new students back, we want to make sure that they stay. So the additional funding there would allow us to continue to build on what we have created, additional college navigators, additional support for students, some funding, for example, is going this year into the summer programs. Now that the vaccine mandate has been lifted, we have data that probably more than 10,000 students, you know, started, registered for their class, and when we asked for the vaccine verification, dropped out. So we have incredible capacity, and CUNY Reconnect is going to be a formidable tool to be able to do that moving forward.
That's great. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to my co-chair and my colleagues.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I just want to quickly turn it over to Councilmember Krishnan for a question.
Thank you so much, Chairs Brennan and Dinowitz. Thank you, Chancellor, for your testimony. I just have one question. You know, I think what concerns me, what concerns this council very much too, are the size of the multiple pegs to CUNY. And I want to be clear, I know City Hall has made an issue of saying that there's been a restoration to CUNY, but the record needs to reflect that there are still earlier cuts and pegs to CUNY as well. And so even whatever partial restoration there may be, there are deeply concerning reductions to CUNY. My question to you is, given us recovering and emerging from this pandemic, given the number of students across the city, and especially in communities of color that CUNY serves as well, the number of programs that you testified to just now, can you testify as to what the impact of this peg, these pegs will be for the long term? Because my understanding is, at this very delicate moment in our city's recovery for our education system, pegs like these are not only going to impact the present situation, but can also set back the institution for the long term as well, and I'd love to hear your testimony on that point.
So, thank you, Councilmember. You couldn't have said it better. We believe that we are an inflection point. We're coming out of the pandemic, we're beginning to see, you know, the numbers are, you know, preliminary, but increasing number of students coming back for summer sessions, the number for the fall begin to look better now. We seem to be in that recovery mode, but we're still in a fragile moment. Many of our students suffer, you know, learning disruption at CUNY. Some of the students that are going to be coming over from the Department of Education also are coming from BASS, so we need additional resources to be able to make them, you know, catch up to speed in terms of their academic readiness. CUNY Reconnect has also shown us how additional touching and reaching out and connecting with the students is indispensable to bring them back. We're building a lot of momentum and learning from what we're doing in that initiative to reshape our strategies with the leadership here of Provost Hensel. CUNY Online is going to be also reaching out to a whole number of New Yorkers that might have been looking for online program opportunities outside from the state. So we have a lot of momentum going on. We're still at a fragile moment, and the pegs hurt, the campuses have been hurt the most, which is the community colleges, right? So we feel that the timing for that is incorrect, and we want to be able to restore all that funding so that we can put all cylinders at the service of our more disadvantaged New Yorkers at this critical time in the economy of New York.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krishnan. Councilmember Schulman?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on my colleagues. So first, I want to say that I am somebody who was a CUNY student, and my mother is a CUNY graduate, so CUNY is very important, not only to the success of the city, but to its future. So CUNY has absorbed years of program cuts while also trying to recuperate from enrollment declines, yet CUNY has managed to maintain a level of success with programs like CUNY, ASAP, CUNY Reconnect, and others. Is there a concern for how much is being lost in terms of returns to the city? For every dollar that CUNY spends on a student brings back $15 to the state, how can we justify these cuts when we're actually taking money away from the city?
I mean, we believe that this is one of the soundest investments that the city can make. We have proved it time and time again in terms of the return on investment on the students. If you think about the crucial role that our campuses play as anchor institutions in each of the boroughs, providing cultural life activities, support to the New York City Public School System for additional programming, I mean, the impact is really, really wide. And so I think that we are part of the solution of how we fully recover and how we recover in a much more equitable way. We saw how the pandemic also hit some of the groups that were more disadvantaged the most, and we believe that we're part of the recipe of sort of building the city back with the right investments in CUNY.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schulman. I want to talk a little more about the specific programs. The 61, it's a $61.2 million cut with the pegs, correct? And so that's really impacting all programs. I just want to touch on a few of the programs that you mentioned. For instance, CUNY Tutor Corps is going to be cut by $4.1 million, is that correct?
Yes.
And then I just want to, you said 28,000 students to 8,000 students. And so can you describe a little more what that means for the CUNY students and for our Department of Education K-12 students?
So, and it is unfortunate, because I can tell you that I think at no time in the history of the city, the partnership between the New York City Public Schools and CUNY has been stronger. We've been really working very hard, both teams, on the career side, on the curriculum side, on the enrollment side. And this is an example of a program that was a winner for all. It was a winner for the high school students, right, that got a mentor and persisted and had someone they can look on, and it would allow them to fight the summer milit and come and support. It was a support for the teachers, which you know, as from your experience.
I would have loved a CUNY Tutor Corps student in my classroom.
Can use all the support, but also think about the pride in that CUNY student who's serving as a mentor to those students, right? The self-esteem, how that helps you to stay, remain focused in school. You're making extra money. You know how much I believe in paid internships, right? This is a version of that. So this is one program that is a win for our students, for our future students, for the teachers, and we think is the right investment to make.
And the peg is essentially gutting that program. You said with ASAP, there are 5,000 fewer students. Can you talk a little more? You mentioned the $1,800 in cash assistance, but there's more to the ASAP program than cash assistance. Can you speak briefly on what the students are going to be losing with this peg?
Well, I mean, first, there's going to be less students, right? So those students would lose participating in the program completely. So the MetroCard, the access to a specialized advisor, the capacity to log in and get into their classes and register early, a number of the things that have proven why ASAP is really, really effective. Additional funding to be able to take summer classes and winter classes to keep momentum. All those things will disappear, right? So either you will not continue, or you will take longer to graduate, wasting your time and your funding and your top dollars or your financial aid, and it's a double hit on us, because those students who would be transferred more quickly are not going to be attending our four-year schools too, right? So it's a loss for those students, and it's a loss for the entire system in terms of this human talent of our students.
And how much, the ASAP program specifically, how much money does that save, investment in that program?
I mean, I can get you, we have some return on investment, I can get you that number in a second, but I mean, what you invest upfront in the student, you save in the speed of the graduation rate.
6,000 per graduate.
So this peg is going to result in spending $6,000 more essentially per graduate. This peg's going to cost money despite the goal of saving money, it's going to cost money. I just want to be clear on that. Not to mention the, you know, the future of a student who may not graduate in as timely a fashion or may not graduate at all.
Yep.
Okay. And I assume it's similar for the ACE program, which is that program for our four-year colleges?
The ACE is smaller because we have it just in a number of the schools, but if the cut of 9.1 is enacted, we're going to have to actually tell 1,750 students who are currently in the program, we're going to have to say, you cannot be in the program anymore.
Students who got into CUNY with the understanding that they would...
Who receive all those additional support, yes.
And it's going to be yanked from them.
Yep.
So they're going to lose the program because of the peg and it's going to end up costing the city more money in the long run.
And I didn't mention in my testimony too, ACE got started similar to ASAP with generous funding from some private foundations, right, who've been supporting our experimentation in this arena. If they see a lack of public investment and interest, they might also decide not to continue to invest there too.
So losing private funds as well?
Yep.
Okay. I want to turn it over to a few colleagues who said they have questions. We'll start with Councilmember Barron.
CUNY, I've been a supporter of CUNY for decades and the core support we need from CUNY is the students. I think the students of CUNY deserve you to commit to no tuition increase and for us to commit to a public funding increase. See, this is an annual budget dance that happens in the city council. They're going to cut stuff. We probably will restore it at the end, but I want to take that for granted because no telling what could happen around here. We probably will restore it, but we don't need just restorations, we need enhancements. See, and that's the game they play. You fight so hard just to restore the cuts when in fact, we need enhancements. So I wanted to tell my colleagues, the bad news is the mayor wants to cut CUNY. The good news is he doesn't have a vote on the budget. The city council passes the budget, not the mayor. So the same questions they're asking you about pegs, we should all make a commitment to not vote for a budget that has these kind of pegs for CUNY. That's number one. Number two, the blackmail initiative on CUNY. Years ago, when I was chair, we had it baseline. I believe it's still baseline in the mayor's budget. So just wanted to know a report on how that's doing and the blackmail initiative funding, I also think needs to be increased. And then childcare at CUNY has been a major issue, childcare at CUNY and also transportation. Textbooks are ridiculous. The price of textbooks, we had a hearing one time where we, they was going into rentals and other kinds of options for textbooks because you know, under this capitalist system, textbooks is a multi-billion dollar profit industry. So they change one paragraph and tell you that's the old edition when it's just one paragraph change forcing students to buy the same book with a new paragraph so they can make more money. So I'm concerned about textbooks as well. And finally, the black faculty. You know, you have been the most disrespectful chancellor I have ever served with. Been waiting a whole year to get the black faculty and myself meeting together. First, your office spent a whole time trying to separate the meeting. To this day, I would have had an easier time meeting with President Obama than you. It's taken a whole year just to sit down and discuss with you the issues on tenure of black faculty, the issues of hiring more black faculty and the issue of more compensation, higher compensation. That's all we wanted to talk about and it's been a whole year and you have refused to meet with us to this date. That is unacceptable, unconscionable and absurd. I never have experienced anything like this in any official, no matter how critical I was of the official. If you can't take criticism, then this is not the job for you because criticism is going to come and you don't shut down communications because you can't handle the criticism and you still don't have no black faces up here with you as you don't have in every time you come to a hearing.
So let me address some of the questions from Councilman Barron. First, on the BMI, I'll have University Provost give you some numbers on that. One of the additional good news is that we advocated for funding, I think for the first time, we have funding from the state to support the work of the blackmail initiative. So that is good news. I don't know if you want to give some numbers?
We have $2.3 million in the budget for the blackmail initiative. That's been cut by 200,000 as a result of some of the pegs and that has not been increased in many years. So obviously the value of that has diminished over time.
And you mentioned childcare. We're very, very happy that with funding that we got from the state. Now, the only of our campuses that did not have a childcare center, which was Queensborough, is going to have one. We're completing that. We put additional funding into that. Some of the funding from CUNY Reconnect has gone to do, to provide some child support for some of those folks that were coming back because that was an important element in the conversations that continues to increase in our campuses. I'll have, the open textbook and book initiative has been really dramatic in lowering some of the costs. I don't know if you want to share some of the numbers?
Yeah, this is something we've spent a lot of time on and want to escalate because it does have such an impact for our students. In the last year, we've had over 8,000 course sections that had cost-free, open access resources. 187,000 students were served for about a savings of $31 million.
And we, the number of black faculty continue to increase in our campuses. Just to give you examples of recent hiring initiatives on the, with the funding that we receive from the state.
Is that the 55 billion or the 50 million?
The 53 million, yes.
53 million.
Yeah. We have over half of all the new hires in this year, we did it in two years, the hires, are folks of color. About 16% of those are African-American that faculty in the last couple of years.
What percentage did you say?
16.
16?
16, yes.
As all?
16% of them.
That's kind of low.
And...
See, when you say people of color, you know...
People of color were about 50%. African-American was 16.
Right. I'm just saying that we get lost in people of color.
Well, that's why I gave you the specific number because I know that's of your particular interest. In the last couple of years too, in the, among the new hires that we've had, the number of African-American faculty have been between 16 and 22%. So we keep increasing the number of African-American faculty coming to the campus. I have the most diverse team in higher ed. If you gave me a bigger table, you'd be able to see some of the amazing African-American leaders that we have in the administration.
You can't find one to come up here with you now?
Well, if you give me a bigger table...
Is the seat available right there?
If you give me a bigger table, we'll be able to have them all here, so...
Let me ask you this also, what about the tenureship, the tenure track of a black faculty?
The tenure track?
Yes. How are black faculty doing with tenure?
That number right off of my head, I can give you the sense of that. We hope that in the recruitment, I would be able to retain that faculty. One of the initiatives that I've been in communications with the African-American faculty, with whom I've met and the provost has met also, with them has been BRESE, the Black Race and Ethnic Stories Initiative funded from the Mellon Foundation, gave us historic funding to support black faculty and they've been very part of that initiative, working on a PhD program at the Graduate Center, which has not been done, which has been a long time request of African-American and ethnic faculty across the, across the system. Funding for many programs for that faculty, research and otherwise coming out of that initiative, so we're very proud of that. I think we're meeting next week. If it had been a one-on-one meeting, it would have been easy and I look forward to engaging in those ways.
I understand the one-on-one, but if I request a meeting with the faculty, what's the problem?
Well, I meet with them too.
No, I'm saying we wanted to meet together and...
And we're going to do that next week.
I know, but why a year? Wait.
Because scheduling issues.
Oh, really? Come on now. I'm going to sell you to Brooklyn Bridge.
All right, we have Councilmember Brewer followed by Sanchez.
Thank you very much. I want to just talk about the enrollment because I do think it's going up and I also think you need funding in order to help it go up. So I wanted to know, it says here it's 6.6 million in order to help increase at the community colleges, but how much are you spending to increase outreach efforts and what are you doing to help? Obviously having ASAP, et cetera, would help.
So, you know, we've had a comprehensive approach to our enrollment strategy, right? It goes from larger investments and I can get you a breakdown of what we have spent on our public relations campaign. You probably saw the ads on the subways, on TV. We also have a very strong social media component, no disrespect to people here, but that's what the students, that's where the traffic is coming. Also in ethnic and minority media, some of those ads also. The campaign with the New York City Public Schools, I think that you saw that for the month of March and April, we waived the application fee for those students in the New York State Department of Education. We knew that many students in the spring have still not applied. We're trying to encourage them to come and I think that that paid dividends. We've also increased our outreach to the private schools in the system also. Some of the efforts with CUNY Reconnect, not only have we been using that to contact people, but what we have learned, we have shared with the campus so they can make it part of their campus culture in the outreach of the students. So we have all hands on decks reaching out. As I mentioned before, and I don't want to be overly optimistic or jinx a trend, right, but the numbers for the summer show an optic about like 6% or 7% and the numbers for the fall, for the first time in two, three years are looking positive. So we want to continue the momentum. We want to continue letting people know that it's the right time to come to CUNY.
Give me some numbers at BMCC. What would that mean for instance, in terms of an increase?
A projection of, I mean...
Because it was 15,000 before the pandemic.
So I...
Or maybe 20,000, I don't know.
I mean, again, I think that we're going to get students back. I don't think we're going to immediately jump to the numbers that we had like in 2019 to give you an example, but I think for the first time, we're really, really optimistic about those trends beginning to shift.
Okay. In terms of numbers for faculty, there's always been a push for more full-time faculty at the community colleges particularly. So how, what is the percentage now of full-time faculty at the community colleges?
I can get you the specific number. One of the things that we did is that we gave, when we broke down the 53 million that we got from the state on new faculty lines, we allocated that based on the needs of the campuses. So many community colleges benefited from, from that program. We can give you a breakdown, for example, of how many each campus got of those lines. Happy to do that.
Okay. And then also in terms of capital, you didn't mention Gutman, North Building, et cetera. What's the status with that capital project?
We are moving along with the RFP in North Hall, so hopefully we'll be able to get that permanent home for Gutman very soon.
Okay, we want affordable housing in that building. You remember that part?
I always remember what you tell me, Councilwoman.
And the other one in terms of capital is a hole in the ground. Who's getting that money and what's going on?
The money...
Hole in the ground.
You want to, well, so, I mean, we're still working with EDC about the Brookdale transaction, that space will be for EDC to determine how the use will be.
All right. And then, I'll let you go, but one program that I do love and I think you touched on it is the K-12 collaboration. Is that funded completely? Is there funding allocated to that? In other words, Hunter Science, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all the schools that CUNY has relationships with on the high school level?
So far, I mean, we have not, you know, seen of any, of any cuts. I mean, it will depend on what the final budget, I guess, is for the Department of Education.
So if you had your brothers, what would be the amount that the community colleges, is it the 128 million or what? That's obviously the restoration. But what would be the amount that the community colleges need to be whole?
Oh my, well, I mean, I think the first step is making sure that we don't have that peg. I mean, the peg is a huge, huge burden. You know, remember, the enrollment loss meant about 130 million of revenue lost in the community college and that's, that's besides the peg. That's just money that they did not earn. So we need every penny to be able to support other students that attend community colleges.
All right. So 130 plus. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez followed by Williams.
Thank you. Thank you Chairs and good afternoon Chancellor and all. I don't even know where to start, but I'll start with your testimony. Half of undergraduate students come from households with incomes less than $30,000 per year, 45% first in their family to attend college, 50% working while going to school, 80% of your graduates stay in New York City. Half of all New York City nurses, every single year, come from CUNY. I mean, the impact cannot be understated, but I will ask this in form of a yes-no. Is CUNY an engine of economic opportunity for the city of New York?
Absolutely.
And then in, you mentioned in your testimony, $60 million in investments in CUNY can result in $900 million of output. Is, can you describe some of that methodology? Is that also including not just the students, but how your institutions are anchors within our community?
Well, I mean, mostly that comes, I mean, that doesn't factor the role of our campuses as anchor institutions. That would add dollars there. That is based on how much money those students will earn based on their degrees and also how much less they will cost the city in terms of using social services and things like that. So it's a savings on that front in addition to the additional revenue that they make and the taxes they will pay based on the jobs they will get.
Absolutely. And I would, I would also add, you know, there's impacts to the nature, just having the institutions across the city of New York. I have a tia, an aunt who was a janitor at Bronx Community College for 30 years and because she was a janitor at Bronx Community College, one day she ran into the head, the dean of the community college and asked them why were there high school students in the school, in the, in one of the buildings. And that is how we learned about Upward Bound program 25 years ago. All of my cousins did it. I did it. I graduated from Upward Bound, went to Harvard, went to Princeton. There are spillover effects that happen because these institutions are hiring in our communities, are there locally and just want to, you know, restate my recommitment that, you know, I will work with my colleagues to ensure that these cuts are not happening. And so the last question is ASAP, ACE, Reconnect, these programs that are helping communities like mine. I represent Bronx Community College and Lehman College is right across the street and Councilmember Dinowitz District, but tell us about the profile of these students. What does it mean for ACE to be cut?
Well, I mean, ACE, I mean, all those programs, A, ASAP has been proven to be, you know, one of the most effective nationally recognized programs in getting community college students to complete on time, right? Which is our first layer of support for the students that come, that come to CUNY. It is an incentive. It helps us to recruit, right? Because the students get additional benefits. It's not just coming and financial aid, it's getting additional things, an additional community of support, additional services. So it's a huge recruitment tool for the two-year schools and then for the four-year school for those kids to transfer. We get money from private donors to get those students to transfer. So there's such a huge loss. ACE is a scaled version of that program for the four-year schools that we're piloting. So again, massive losses in human capital, massive losses in opportunity and hope for the city.
Thank you so much Chancellor and, you know, reiterating what Councilmember Barron said, we're going to fight against cuts, but we also absolutely need to protect the students from not seeing tuition increases. Thank you so much. Thank you Chair.
And let the record state that we did not include a tuition increase in our budget request. So just to dispel any rumors that that is on the table.
Thank you.
Okay, with Councilmember Williams followed by Velazquez.
Thank you. I actually had a follow-up question to what Councilmember Barron said. Do you have a number of the black faculty through the system? Do you know how many black faculty are on staff? Why you look for that?
Yes, why?
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll just go through all my questions. So I would love to know what you're doing on the workforce front and what budget allocations exist there. As you know, there are tons of industries and New Yorkers are just not prepared to get opportunities within those industries. I want to talk about your college. It's my understanding that your college has not been prioritized in capital funds. There was $71 million that apparently is in a CUNY account to build a new facility that they've wanted to build.
You said York?
York College, yep. So they currently have $71 million. I know they're asking... I know they're asking for, give me a second, $300 million more dollars. I know in the state budget, you all were awarded $435 million in flexible capital funding for a total of $1.1 billion for capital funds. So I just want to know, why is York College not prioritized? And if York College can be prioritized in your capital budget? And last, but certainly not least, as a current doctoral student, really interested in the resources and support you have for doctoral students, it's really hard to be a doctoral student and sometimes work. So students may not be able to work and want to complete their degrees, but there are not a lot of resources. I'm thankful that I was a part of a fellowship when I originally started matriculating, and now recently was awarded a Humanities Fellow opportunity. But a lot of students struggle to get money to complete their doctoral studies at CUNY.
So let me allow Provost's Hensel to give you the breakdown on the African-American faculty, and then I'll take a stab at some of your other questions.
Hi. So university-wide, there's 864 faculty members who are Black. That's 12.3%. And just to put into context, some of the earlier comments about the progress in hiring, the recent faculty that we hired last year, 15.3% were Black. So making progress.
And the year before, 22. So each of the most recent hires are a lot more diverse than the whole body of our faculty that has been there for a long time and will take, you know, some time to change. A couple of things. Fully with you on the doctoral support, we love you very hard, the state, for $7 million so that we can increase stipends for the doctoral students. Anybody in Albany will tell you that I was championing that, because I concur with you that we need to increase those stipends to be more competitive. The state gave us three, so we hope to be able to make up the difference somewhat. We have prioritized York College for capital funding. We can send you a list of all the projects that we have done there. From the performance arts centers to science centers, I mean, we can...
Yeah, I know, and a lot of that money was allocated by way of the council, but not the overall pot of money that CUNY is sitting on. So this is specific to the York College Academic Village and Conference Center specifically is what I'm talking about.
And that building we prioritize among the three items that we asked the state to fund this year. Now, when we get the completed allocation, we're making decisions on that, and we've been supporting York on that project since the beginning.
So just to clarify, you are prioritizing it this year because last year was not prioritized. You all prioritize Hunter College.
It was on the, it's the building. Let's talk about it. That building has been on our priority list for the last two years, right? And we've been adding capital to that. What I mentioned was other projects that we can tell you that we've been investing in York, too.
No, I'm aware of the current projects that are there, but I'm also aware that this project has been a priority for both state members that represent the college and council members. And it is my understanding that CUNY, in the past, has not prioritized funding for this particular project, even though you all continue to receive capital funding from the state and have a whole bucket of money, and there's current allocations to the project. But they have not been able to have their full amount to actually begin the project.
So two things. We have, this has been just the past two years that we've gotten funding for new capital, right? We have not allocated the pot that's just been awarded two weeks ago, right? So we're making decisions about that. And the, I've been fully supportive of the York project. We take a look at all the bucket, but we have not been receiving capital for many, many years in a row, so just the last two years. So York is one of our priorities, and we have to look at where we end this year to hopefully see if we can complete that project.
And just Chairs, just a comment. The Equal Employment Practices Commission that was just here for their budget hearing actually submitted a report on the underutilization at CUNY community colleges around racial and ethnic groups. And so just wondering if you were able to address some of their recommendations to address the underutilization in employees at CUNY community colleges. And just so you know the percentages, Asians actually were the most underutilized with 39% of job groups, then Blacks, 19%, and then Hispanics, well, actually Hispanics at 25%, then Blacks at 19%, and then women overall at 27%. So were you able to address the recommendations from EEPC?
So we'll be happy to share with you the response to the report, some of the work that we've been doing, some of those categories, some of those things can be very specific. For example, in the issue of Asians, for example, the numbers are skewed in part because of the two community colleges in the Bronx. But more than happy to engage you with the recommendations. We take that very seriously, and we work very hard with the leadership in each of the schools, too, so they can advance that. We need to be able to have the resources to hire the people to deal with those numbers.
Okay, thank you. Underscoring the importance of EEPC in this year's budget because they do amazing work. Thank you.
Councilmember Velazquez followed by Joseph.
Hi there. I'll have a mixed bag of questions for you. First of all, as you can see, I've allowed a snacks here, part of the snacks caucus, because, you know, it's long days with the hearings, but it brings up the point of hunger and your students. And so one of the questions I have today is, how are you addressing that within your students?
So through a whole range of ways. One, one of the first things that I did when I became Chancellor was to ask, and it's in the budget request, $1 million that the council is providing to support students that have food insecurity. So we've been tackling that since the beginning. A second thing that we did, and this is a recommendation that came from student government, was that we opened our pantries to students from all the system. Before, when I became Chancellor, you had to be a Baruch student to go to the Baruch pantry, right? Student government said they should be open to everybody. It made sense, and we opened them, and it was incredibly helpful during the pandemic. We're looking to partner with some of the organizations. For example, I am a believer, too, that the pantry is an important thing on the campus. It might not be the most convenient thing for the students. So we need to partner with the neighborhoods where the students live, with the resources that they have there. The other part, and we could really use the council's support here, is that the, it is challenging to operate the cafeterias on our campuses. They don't have the volume that some of the vendors need. I mean, and I know that from having been president in a small campus in the Bronx. And the pandemic threw the food business into a spiral. We actually had a contract to get a vendor for the entire system that went kaput as a result of the pandemic. So right now, many, many operators do not find that they make revenue by serving our students, which means that either we'll have to subsidize the food there or find other solutions. So we'd be delighted to sit with you and others to think about this, because this is an important issue that we're going to need your support. And the pandemic really threw a monkey wrench in our capacity to bring some of the companies that operate the cafeterias.
I'm looking forward to that, and let's, yeah, let's set that up right away. Other questions. Will CUNY ensure that tuition for out-of-state students is not increased in order to honor its goal of serving students regardless of race, gender, and immigration status?
That's, when we make the final budget decision at the end of this year, we'll make determinations about out-of-state tuition.
Okay. And then finally, in what ways can you provide the ASAP program to be expanded to the senior colleges whose students are in desperate need of support?
Well, ACE is an attempt to use the lessons learned from ASAP and take it to the four-year. I mean, it was a program that was piloted at Lehman and John Jay, and then expanded. So cutting ACE would not allow us to continue seeing if we get those results.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph followed by Farias.
Thank you, Chairs. Hi, Chancellor.
Great to see you.
Same here. I want to say I'm glad to see you, and I realize there's a visible partnership between DOE and CUNY. So inside Higher Ed, recently you had a partnership. So what are the recruitment strategies CUNY has in work to recruit students in New York City Public Schools?
Oh, so we're doing a whole range of them, and I'll have, if I forget some, I'll have my university provost sort of remind. But for example, we just announced a couple of days ago, beginning this fall, every senior in the New York City Public Schools is going to get a letter from us saying, "We're ready to welcome you at CUNY. These are the schools you can apply to. This is the way to do it." It's going to have a barcode that's going to make it easier for you to apply. Moving forward, we hope to be able to build on that to continue to make it easy for the students to apply. What that will do also is allow us to engage with them and their families earlier, right? As opposed to waiting until October, November, December, when people start going crazy with some of the applications. I'm really excited about that capacity to engage with them earlier. We're working on an app for counselors so they can have access to real-time information. We have that on our sort of procurement conga line to be able to secure that and get it for the students. So we're trying to build on that partnership more and more. More work with the early colleges, which are direct pilots of recruiting. I know that you're a big advocate of those, of those programs. Anything else?
We're working to simplify financial aid to make sure that that award gets done almost instantaneously, because the love they're getting from some private schools of $10,000, even though it's a $50,000 bill, is leading to some poor choices. Also, I just wanted to point out one program we haven't talked about that did get cut, that's exactly in line with what you're asking, and that's College Explorers, which takes 10th graders to college campuses at CUNY to introduce them to college campuses, and that's been reduced by 1.5 million. And so instead of 35,000 students who get to visit a college, it's now down to 20.
That's a shame. Some of the proven work, thank you for that, so we'll keep that in the back of our mind. Some of your programs that have worked, and I've watched, CUNY Fatherhood Academy, it's a program that serves ages 18 to 30 through education, employment, personal development, and all of the support, including GD prep, tutoring, and... What's marketing effort do you use to spread the word? This is such a great program, and I think it goes unnoticed, and no one knows about this amazing program. So what are you doing to amplify this program?
I mean, I think that's one of the challenges, that it's not available to all the campuses, right? So I think in the campuses where you have them, people do know about them because it's such a, you know, transformational experience for the students to participate. If we had additional funding, right, we could do, we could do more. I do think that they're fairly well-known, but not system-wide, but in the campuses where they are.
Thank you. And one last question, thank you, Chair, with your permission. How are you caring for students that have been through foster care in the CUNY system? In New York City Public Schools, we have an office that handles them now, but we want to know, how is CUNY handling students that come through care?
So I mean, we have a number of partnership programs. You know, one that ended was, we had a program with students that used to be housed at Queens College in their dorms, and I think at City College dorm, if memory serves me right, with funding from ACS to be able to support them. There's a program also that the mayor began that provides funding for the students to attend not just to CUNY, but to other schools. The majority of the students who are part of that program are with us in New York. And again, this is a population that, if we can do more for them, open to your suggestions because we know that they have some of the worst unfortunate educational outcomes because they've been scarred by, you know, domestic violence, by physical violence, by poverty, all those things. So happy to be supportive in working with you to find additional support systems for them.
Absolutely. I just want to know, in terms of when you do have students that come from that, do you provide tutoring? Do you provide coaching? Do you provide job training? What is, we see the outcome. We saw the statistics, just usually justice involved, usually suspension rate, even in middle school, elementary level, and all of that. What?
So let me get back to you, because the program that I'm more familiar with was the residential program, and that changed in terms of its partnership with ACS. I wouldn't want to mislead you, so let me get you the right information on that.
Yeah, not on the record. Thank you, Chancellor.
Councilmember Farias followed by Stevens.
Thanks, Chairs. Thank you, folks, for coming in to testify today. I'm going to try to go through the questions really quickly with my limited time. As a member of the Black-Latino-African Caucus here in the council, I'm vested in, you know, our retention of Black professors and tenured professors. I'd also like to hear the numbers for Latino-Hispanic professors and Asian professors, if you folks have that. And if you don't have it here today, you can give it to us.
We have it.
Okay, great. And while we're waiting on those numbers, for the technical education on campuses, how are we seeing these programs' success or challenges with some of the cuts that are being called for? Are we seeing any declines in enrollment? What are we doing for the process of going into the workforce? And do those numbers of successes in our, either college-to-career or our technical vocational trade programs, are we counting those numbers? And like, I know they're not graduation numbers, but are we counting them towards the success metrics for each of the campuses?
So let me, well, while the provost gathers the data on the groups. Workforce and career has been one of the things that we've invested the more since I became Chancellor, right? Because we feel that that is one missing component of the great education that the students got and the accessibility that we have. In that sense, very, very thankful to the mayor for baselining the CUNY inclusive economy. I mean, that is a way to build capacity in each campus on career services, grow the number of internships. I mean, that hole is destined to that entire arena there. The mayor's office also added about $8 million in paid internships for many of our students spring forward. So it's been a sizable investment, and we want to do more on the front of careers. We just, I mean, this, I'll give you an example. Two weeks ago, we began, I announced, we began a program that was since last summer with the MTA, 150 paid internships. We had 16,000 students apply to that, right? I was in Mount Sinai in a program that gets funded by the state, again, paid internships for students in public health. I visited with the president of LaGuardia Boys Technologies, manufacturing company in Long Island City. So we've been pushing, and the industry is ready for talent. We've just been saying, come and hire students for paid, and hire them for full-time jobs. And I think that, did that buy enough time to get the data? Yes.
It did. Thank you. Yes, so across, looking at tenure track and non-tenure-track faculty together, the total of folks of color is 38.6%. Broken down, that's 10.5% Hispanic, 12.5% Black, 14.5% Asian. And to give you some context, the national benchmark for Black faculty is 6%. It's an area that needs a great deal of improvement across the board.
Great, thank you for that. Chairs, if I may, two more things. Thank you. And I just want to say, we should touch offline on some of these internships to municipal work, and maybe some of the complications. I'm, the council itself and myself personally have been working on the civil service exam backlog and whatnot, so we should continue the conversation.
Absolutely.
And then in terms of, I see pegs on vacancies. Do we know, I see the civilian and pedagogical, the civilian track, what were those titles in charge of, and what services are now not going to be happened for? And do we know how long the vacancies were open?
Well, I mean, we can give you a breakdown on some of those things, but again, people talk about vacancies, those are, you know, less counselors, less librarians, less of the people providing services, right? These are the things that then...
So the civilian post, our library, like librarians, for example, or counselors, for example?
No.
That's what I'm asking.
So what would, a couple of examples of things that would be considered in the civilian post are, you know, custodians, facilities, security, things like that.
Okay.
But, you know, kind of back to, I don't know if you're beginning, we've also lost all those positions that the Chancellors talked about because of the tuition and the, plus the pegs. So this is just the last round.
Yeah, and just my last question, and it could be yes or no, or you can, you can answer it how you feel. I see through your testimony ASAP is being impacted, tutoring, proficiency assistance, staff reductions, capacity and ability in some of our campuses, services, maintenance, public safety, professional development. Would you say that these cuts are going to directly impact services?
See.
Thank you.
Councilmember Powers.
You skipped me. Good afternoon. Councilmember Stevens.
Councilmember Stevens.
And I'm jumping in, because I gotta go. It's all good, no worries. Just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to start off by saying that I'm a CUNY family, mother, sister, daughter, and myself, all graduated from CUNY. But also wanted to just kind of just emphasize the importance of ASAP. My daughter definitely was an ASAP student. I worked in youth development for 20 years, and ASAP literally was the reason why a lot of my students was able to actually complete, complete school. And so it's disheartening to see that this is something that's on the chopping block that could be cut, when the reality is this should be expanded and offered to every student that's entering any two-year institution. And so just want to be associated with some of Barron, Councilmember Barron's comments that we shouldn't be fighting to put back cuts, we should be fighting for enhancements at this point, because this is a evidence-based program that has, we have the evidence that shows that this actually helps students graduate in an efficient time. And so just wanted to be associated with that. Councilmember Farias already kind of started to ask these questions, but I wanted to talk Councilmember Farias already kind of started to ask these questions, but I wanted to talk a little bit about workforce development, and what does that look like? Because in this city, we have a huge crisis around finding folks for these jobs, but we also have a huge unemployment rate. And so for me, it's like, how are we connecting the dots? So can you talk a little bit about what your partnership looks like with the New York City around getting CUNY students into these jobs? In addition, what does your partnerships also look like with nonprofits, which is another sector that is struggling to get young people in the city's jobs? And then how can we work together?
So thank you for that, and I'd be happy also to, you know, offline. So we've, have a number of programs, for example, that provide paid internships and connections to small businesses and nonprofits because we realize that those are big parts of our economy, right? And they seldom get less attention than a partnership with larger companies, right, do. And we have a number of programs, and we've targeted some of the funding at the city level and from the state level just for partnership with small businesses and nonprofits. The Brooklyn Recovery Course Program that I mentioned in my testimony is a program that is destined just to work with that sector in particularly Central Brooklyn, to give you an example of one of those things. On the larger employer side, we began the partnership with the New York City Jobs CEO Council, some of the 30 largest companies in New York. They've been helping us to upgrade curriculum, to look at our offerings, to create certificates and programs, and to create pipelines for internships and apprenticeships built into the program. So I think that this is one of the areas in which we have made the most significant progress, even with the pandemic. The response from the employers have been incredible for our talent, and we want to continue building on that with your support.
Absolutely, thank you. And just want to say that definitely we want to connect offline. I know we have a small business initiative, small pilot program that we're working on, but also want to think about how, how can we do this very similar thing with the nonprofit sector? It's a sector that is hurting, they cannot find staff, and a lot of the young people who are in CUNY can actually be working there part-time, and those dots are not being connected in a real way. So definitely want to continue to work and have that conversation about making sure that industry has young people. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, now we have Councilwoman Powers.
Thank you. Nice to see you guys. Sorry I missed your testimony, but I was watching online, and nice to see you guys. You know, I have a lot of questions. I want to talk about Brookdale, which is obviously a big project that's coming ahead. But I want to start just by my, and I know you share this, my deep concern about proposed cuts to CUNY, which is, I am a CUNY graduate, just like many others here, but you don't have to be a CUNY graduate to understand how important it is as an economic engine, an opportunity to the city, to the state. And for a lot of students, it's an affordable way to get the higher education they need to succeed in this world. And still, you know, a lot of correlation between degree and job, and we have an opportunity here to fund a institution and a series of institutions that provide that opportunity, whether it's a two-year, four-year degree or a graduate degree like I got. And so I just hope all my colleagues will be joining all of us who have been saying this. I know you agree, so I'm preaching to the choir, but I just, we have to be-
Indeed.
-vigilant in our pursuit of making sure that CUNY gets the funding that deserves, not just the cuts, but the funding that deserves. And I will say that our, you know, budget response, 36.9 requested for CUNY to restore cuts, only $1 million in there. 5.8 for CUNY Reconnect, 5.8 in there. 10.5 to accelerate competing age, engaged program at CUNY, we asked for 10.50, provide additional CUNY academic advisors, we asked for 30.5.5. Budget is, budget, executive budget 1.9. So we're at 10 percent of what we asked for, and I think our asks are fairly reasonable. So would ask folks to stay on message here when it comes to that. Now I will talk about Brookdale. I wanted to make sure I talk about how important CUNY is because it's important, we say that often. Obviously, a project you guys have talked about, and it's being talked about in the capital program here, is the Brookdale campus, which I, where I think we're all excited about, an opportunity to spur major growth in life sciences, have CUNY be connected to that, have our high school, public high schools connected to that. Excellent opportunity here for the city and proud of my district. But I just want to get some details on the record here. Just, one is timeline and where we are in the process. Two is construction, what happens to different institutions that are there, well, one institution, but what happens to different programs that are there in the middle of that? Three is, do we have an understanding how many students might be served by that, CUNY students? And fourth is, we're doing a lot of resiliency work in that area and want to know, and Bellevue has a resiliency program going up to Langone, so how you guys will plug into that and the larger East Side Coastal Resilience Program going on there. Those are four questions.
So let me yield a floor to our COO, who's the person who's directly working on that project. I think he can answer those four and many more.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. First of all, thank you for your support. As we recently met and sort of discussed this very important project for CUNY, a couple of things. Number one is, as you know, we've, EDC has retained Skipmore to do, and we're right now in the phases of sort of doing the analysis of the space planning. As part of that, as part of that phasing plan, we're looking to see, our goal, and it's been our position, that we want as less interruption as possible to academic structure. I mean, as I mentioned to you in our meeting the other day, the good thing about this project for CUNY is we don't need, we don't, we're not part of a land use review process. We, our, 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 our project is as of right, and because of that, we've told EDC that our, as they're analyzing this project, as they're moving this project forward, that taking into consideration how we struct, how we move, how we stack it to make sure that as less interruption as possible to the project. With regards to resiliency, we've hired, they've hired a firm to sort of look at, at the, the impact of that project and how, when we build a project, it has as less effect on the community and on this project going forward. So we think we are in good shape. With regards to the timeline, we're right now finishing the, the analysis of, with the consultant. We have to now do an EIS and a ULP process for the second phase of the project. We are expecting to, by the time that we sort of have that analysis, to be able to have a timeline that we could share with you, as I mentioned to you in that meeting. A couple of moving parts, but we're, both the governor and the mayor, when they announced the project, stated to EDC and to all of us the importance of getting this project done on time.
Just, one follow-up question. When you say it's as of right, you're talking about the CUNY component to that, but the larger project, as I understand it, needs a ULP-
That's correct.
Okay. And the last thing I'd say is, and I just permission from the chair to have 10 more seconds to just, I just want to say this on the record, and I've said it to you guys privately, but I want to be public about it. Student housing really is important, and that has been the housing for many students at Hunter. My mom was one of them, and really important, essential that students have an opportunity to have a place to live, especially in the core of Manhattan. So I really hope we can get to a place where that is included in this final project.
So, Councilmember, thank you. It's been a priority for the chancellor. He's, he's charged me with, we're doing a couple of things. Number one, system-wide, we have about 2,800 dorms, system-wide, and about seven, seven dorms that, three we own that we control. So we're in the process of bringing in, coming up with a short-term and a, and a long-term, long-term solution. So the short-term is that we're looking at our existing infrastructure to make sure that we come up with a, with a solution to deal with the affordability, affordability issue. So you know that the students that are in the dorms at Brookdale, the chancellor has guaranteed that we will make sure that those students will not be affected economically and otherwise. Long-term, we're looking to, we're bringing in a consultant to look at CUNY and to understand what the needs are, and I think they're going to look at the market conditions and affordability across the system, and we'll be able to present that analysis to the chancellor, and then we'll be able to begin to make some decisions.
Just one last question on the housing question. The mayor has asked every city agency to take an evaluation for, to look at housing for the asylum seekers, and that's with the police academy down the block for me is currently a short-term holding spot for some folks. Has CUNY been asked to identify, and have you identified, any spaces where even during the summer you might have, you might be home for asylum seekers?
We, we're providing that information to both the city and the state.
And you have provided, are there-
Well, I mean, we're providing information, they asked for different kinds of sites, and we did an inventory, and we shared that with them.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just want to thank every, all my colleagues and CUNY for testifying today. I think it's very clear, the cuts are devastating. All the programs that our students here in New York City rely on for the social and economic mobility are set to be cut, and it's really going to make it much more challenging, more challenging than it already is for, for our youth to do better for themselves, do better for their families than their families were able to do for them. These cuts are just devastating, and I appreciate your testimony today to highlight how devastating these cuts are.
Thank you all so much. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, today's executive budget hearings are adjourned.